Good afternoon. Today is Tuesday, February 8th, and we're here for the purpose of a briefing meeting. Thank you all for being here. First on our agenda is an Audit Committee representation for discussion and information, and I'll turn it over now to Ms. Gittens, who is the Board Liaison to the Audit Committee.
Okay, thank you very much, but my screen is not up yet, so I will wing this. Can we use the mics at the front, right? Correct, or no? Yes, we can. Okay. So basically, what we're doing today is having the Chair, Mr. Cohen, and Mr. Davis from the Audit Committee to come and discuss their role was as the committee, was to help us as a board understand what we needed to do going forward with our audit and with RSM. So they have done that, they have spoken with RSM, they have reviewed all of the materials, and Mr. Cohen is the Chair. Mr. Davis has specific expertise in the area that they are requesting audit. So that's why both of them are here today, and to give an overview, and then to answer any questions that the Board members might have. And I know there was a bit of confusion at one point. They are in their role as advisory, but they are not deciding anything about RSM. They are just giving us information to help us make those decisions. So without further ado, Mr. Cohen, would you like to come forward and begin? And if you want to take the other side, Mr. Davis, thank you so much. I really appreciate the two of you being here today.
Thank you, and good afternoon. I am also my new Chair in the Audit Committee, and I have been meeting with this committee. Ms. indicated Jeff Davis, who is a subject matter expert on information technology audit. And the reason that that is important is, if you saw the Statement of Work as proposed by RSM, one of the key areas that they determined should be audited would be cybersecurity and information technology. And as an Audit Committee, and we are deemed to be subject matter experts when it comes to risk and internal audit, we felt very strongly that that is a key area that should be audited for the district. It's a global issue, and Mr. Davis can expand on that further. I'm going to give Mr. Davis a couple of moments, but first I want to just clarify. What Ms. Gittens said is absolutely correct. We are an advisory committee. We also, under policy, have oversight over whoever is determined to be the internal auditor on behalf of the school board. I know there's two different internal auditors, I want to make sure that everybody's clear about that. That does not mean that the school board does not intervene if they feel that whoever is determined to be the auditor is not performing their role adequately. We did meet with RSM. One thing I can inform the committee, the Board, and our committee as well, is we had a very good conversation with RSM. I think there was a mutual respect that was formed. They understand that we do understand how the audit process and risk assessment and determination process works, and therefore, we can be more specific to the Lee County School District and the performance of the risk assessment. The one weakness I know that had been noted in the past was the lack of interviews with Advisory Committee Chairs, and that was something that RSM agreed to. Interview at least the Chairs of each of the Advisory Committees to understand their perception of the risk within the district, because they are meeting with a number of members of staff during their work. They also get to see policy, procedure, they have access to budget, so they do understand the impact of different departments and how they interact with each other, as opposed to a staff member who understands strictly how the performance of their work interacts with certain individuals within the district, but not the overall global impact. With that being said, we determined that a risk assessment is the key process that should be performed first, because the last risk assessment was performed several years ago. As we all know, the world has changed significantly due to COVID, and technology has taken the forefront. Also, the risks within each of the school districts has changed significantly over the past two years, so that's why we felt very strongly that a risk assessment should be done first. Included within that risk assessment, IT should be a key component. That is not to exclude the performance of an IT audit, but this should be, and information technology, I apologize for the acronym, IT meaning information technology, should be part of the risk assessment process. There should be follow-up on prior audit findings, not only performance of the audit findings done by RSM previously, but any third party that performed audits or consulting services, there should be follow-up to ensure that staff is continuing on the path that they indicated that they would be, and that the Board believed that they would be performing those functions. With that, I'm going to pass it over to Mr. Davis to expand a little bit on the information technology component.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen. So my name is Jeff Davis. I have 15 years of IT audit advisory and GRC, which is Governance Risk Compliance Experience. I'm a Senior Director of Internal Audit over with Herc Rentals, which is a construction rental company down in Bonita Springs. When we met with RSM, and we specifically told them the need to kind of consider or evaluate IT, this is not only dictated by prior year or the previous risk assessment and audit plan that was performed by RSM, but also by modern events. Since that last risk assessment has been conducted, you are seeing more targeting of municipalities as it relates to cybersecurity risk. So that's why, as an Audit Committee Advisory Board, we thought it worthwhile and something that needs to be a priority, and could be done in conjunction with the ongoing risk assessment that RSM has proposed.
Okay. And I think what we can do right now is open it up for the, with permission of the Chair, for the Board to ask any questions that they might have. And prior to that, Attorney Bruno, is there anything you would like to add as to where we're at in this process?
I don't really have anything else to add. I can just say that with regard to the SOW, I'm waiting for RSM to add some additional things to that. As soon as I receive that, that will come before the Board.
Okay. And so just to be clear as well, we are not here today to talk about how much each individual thing costs, but we are just talking about, in the purview of the Advisory Board of the Committee, their findings and their suggestions for us moving forward. Yes, ma'am?
So I would like to sort of turn over a new page when it comes to auditing. I don't know who to look at when I'm talking. I'd like us to embrace, as a governance team, embrace the findings in audits as an opportunity to improve, as opposed to a gotcha, or a reason to hang employees or a department or whatever out to dry. That really is how I'm approaching this. That's one thing. The other thing is, I have significant concerns about safety and security when it comes to IT, and what we allow the public to consume and don't allow the public to consume. So I would hope that any report that we receive and any findings we receive would be heavily redacted, and that much of this would be discussed in a shade session, because it does, it is integral to our safety and security of the district. So that's really my only concern.
No, absolutely. And I think that's key in kind of how RSM will put the report together, and we can make sure that's clear, or the Board can make sure in discussions with RSM. They do note that within their Statement of Work that data privacy and integrity is part of that component, whereby if there's anything that is confidential, it'd be excluded and would be done during closed sessions. So absolutely.
All right, good, because I remember having an audit before, and I can't remember, I can't remember who conducted the audit. It was probably a state one, where we had to retroactively go back and redact, and I would hate to see us in that situation again. So whoever is responsible for that redaction, it's certainly not me, because I don't know what we're talking about here, but whoever would be responsible for that, we would have...
Yeah, and I don't know the level of detail that they would go into their report, but especially considering IT, that the sensitivity of data, listen, IP addresses alone is an incredibly sensitive component. You would want any of that sort of, so yeah, I would agree.
Oh, so you're the expert. I'm getting that sense now, because we're sitting here talking about it. Thank you. Thank you for your willingness to serve both of you.
So it, yes, go ahead.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yeah. Through the Chair, I'd like Mrs. Patrica to clarify something that she said, which kind of disturbed me. You said, "I don't want it to be a gotcha." Why would you say that the Board is out for a gotcha when what? Well, then, I just clarify what you said, because to me, the purpose of an audit is not a gotcha, it's a hope we don't have to get you, but if there's something there that you're doing that's not good, or you've been negligent on something, we want to tell you, we don't want you to be defensive, we just want you to follow the advice of the experts and fix it.
Having lived through the period leading up to the half penny sales tax, that's what I'm talking about, and some of the audits that came our way, and some of the rules that were put in the way of the district to get that passed, that's what I'm talking, I'm not talking about the Board treating it as a gotcha. I'm talking about sometimes there's a perception that audits coming from the state are used as a gotcha against districts that don't do exactly what the state tells them to do. So that's what I'm talking about. And then the public reads, like, there was a, was it a $13 million finding about, what are those things called? There was a $13 million finding on impact fees, claiming that we had used them incorrectly, and the public embraced that as a way of criticizing the district when, in fact, we had used those properly, but it took us time to prove that. By the time we proved it, it was no longer in the headlines, and everybody was still left with the impression that the district had misused impact fees. That's what I'm talking about. I'm talking about, this is a process that I have some confidence in, and because I don't feel as if these audits are retaliatory, or in any way meant as a gotcha, I'm embracing them as an opportunity to get better. Does that make sense?
That makes more sense now, when you said it, but the first time out, and I have, quite frankly, in the past, noticed some pushback on auditing, especially ones that we have talked about in the past, that nobody on the Board wanted, and that's another discussion after we're done with the cybersecurity, because there had been audits that I know that I have asked for for over three years, that were never, never done, and there was pushback on it, and members of the Board, only two or three of us, thought it was necessary to do, for instance, Maintenance Department. That was a big one. So there are areas, and I'm respecting what you gentlemen are saying about the cybersecurity, and certainly, that's extremely important, but there are other issues that we have in the past brought up, and there's always this, and this is my perception, a perception of, "Oh, staff, we, you know, we don't want you to feel bad," or "we don't..." You know, I think there's been this overly protective attitude, which I believe is one of the reasons why we no longer have RSM. Maybe they're coming back, but we no longer have them, because they were viewed as, the auditors were viewed as the bad guys exposing things, and that's not how it's supposed to be done. And as I said before, it's not a gotcha unless there's something to get, and there's something that's not being done right, and then it has to be fixed.
And thank you very much, Ms. Vaughn. I'm just going to let Superintendent Savage weigh in first, before Mr. Cohen, before you continue with your information and discussion.
Yes, this is a great conversation at the governance level, because, quite frankly, different organizations embrace the audit function very differently. And I think one of the benefits I had when I went to the state level at the Department of Education, was they had a very robust internal, where they were auditing comprehensive process audits in a cyclical fashion, ongoing, high-risk areas were getting more frequent audits every three years or less. The responses that they would find would build on each other, so that over the course of multiple administrations, as you had turnover in different department direction, you knew the risk areas within your departmental areas. And it's a powerful way to have an improvement lens, so that the organization never feels like there isn't. And the term that I've used is a gotcha, that it should never feel like a gotcha. It really is always about continuing to improve, continuing to be aware of our controls, to continue to evolve our systems and processes. I do think that in some organizations, when there isn't a robust audit feature, it can feel as if it's an accountability that people are afraid of. And so I think it's also about being respectful in the organization, of knowing that we all have our different time periods, where the staff is overwhelmed, they're overloaded with work, and sometimes with an audit that isn't as cyclical, can be an awful lot of additional evidence collection, there's just a lot to it, that staff can feel like now they have to stop what they're doing to do that. So I think just the nature, we've had a lot of those conversations in the Audit Committee, and this is really an exciting opportunity for us to evolve our organizational disposition towards this type of thinking.
Thank you, Dr. Savage. Ms. Gittens?
I did want to bring one thing up. Ms. Patrica kind of reminded me of, we're talking about the safety and security and privacy and integrity of the Board, and this is a conversation that came up previously about the Audit Committee. Because as information comes back that they have to look at, it is the same type of situation that, you know, having a closed session, or having stuff redacted, or however, and maybe you can address how that would, through the Chair, how that would be affected, just like it would be for us on the Board. So, I mean, do you want to...
Mr. Cohen?
I think what we're dealing with is Florida sunshine, and I would bow to your attorney's thoughts on how we handle sunshine when it comes to matters of high confidentiality, should there be an investigation, should a weakness in firewalls exist that is being brought to the attention of the Audit Committee? Obviously, we don't want to bring out too much information about the firewall weaknesses, because that opens us up to major problems. However, I will leave it to the Board's attorney to give guidance to the Board as to how to handle best compliance with Florida sunshine, which is paramount, but also protection of the district in cases where something is highly confidential and can pose a threat to the district.
Cybersecurity issues are certainly something that we can have closed sessions on, executive session. That is something that the sunshine law allows, because of the nature of those types of information, so that, I'm not concerned about that. We can have executive session on that.
But can the Audit Committee as well, right?
Yes, the Audit Committee can have executive session on cybersecurity issues.
I think I'd like to address Ms. Vaughn's concerns about the, how an audit is performed. I did not go into detail on my background. I have close to 40 years in internal audit, various roles in internal audit. I started internal audit where internal audit was the gotcha. The minute we walked in the door, everybody hated my guts, because they thought I was strictly there to make a name on everybody's reputation. And it was a challenge, and usually after the performance of the first or second audit, they realize that the auditor is no longer coming in there as the Monday morning quarterback. They are coming in there as a member of the risk management team. The Board is the tone to the top, you are a key component of risk management. Your superintendent and his chiefs are a vital role in that, because if they don't set the tone at the top, staff will not understand or respect the risks within their departments. So it all starts at the top, the auditor has to be part of that process. Understand the mindset within the district and how internal audit is handled. If an internal auditor comes in and says, "I need an hour of your time, I don't care what you're doing right now, drop everything, because I'm the auditor, and you need to do this," or doesn't listen to the auditee, the audit's failed. No matter what happens from that point forward, the audit has failed. That is why you have an Audit Committee, so we can sit and work with your internal auditors to make sure they get off on the right foot, because the minute you start on the wrong foot, as I keep saying, the audit is going to fail, and you are not going to get value out of an audit report. Everybody needs to buy into it. It should never be a gotcha, because if it's a gotcha, that means that once the finding is reported, you already have a mindset amongst the auditees that, "No matter what I do, it's never going to be good enough, and therefore, I might as well just keep doing it the way I've always done it, and if they don't like the way I do my job, let them find somebody else who wants to do it." And that's not how this should be. You're absolutely correct, Ms. Vaughn, this is a learning experience. The auditee should be learning from the process and understand why the audits are progressing. To your second point about maintenance, an audit plan is driven off of risk, and the internal auditors are your experts, as is your Audit Committee, in identification of risk. There could be a dispute as to the hierarchy of risk, but ultimately, that's what's driving your audit plan. And if maintenance is not deemed to be a high risk, except maybe monetarily, it may fall a little bit lower in the risk matrix, that does not mean you will not have an audit of maintenance. You may not have an audit of maintenance within the coming year, it might be put off as a moderate risk, where it may be audited in year two or three of an audit plan. That does not mean that it will never be audited, it just falls to where in the audit timeline that it gets reviewed.
And...
Mr. Davis has something?
And the other thing I want to add to that, and RSM lays this out in their Statement of Work too, your audit plan is a living document, risk is always evolving, right? That audit, that audit plan, that risk assessment is not a static document, it needs to be revisited as risks change, as personnel change, as processes change. So that's the other thing that the Board, I want to stress, is based off of the risk hierarchy that comes out and the audit plan that comes out, that should always be reevaluated on a continuous basis as the situations change.
And the last point that I want to bring out is, and I know there was concern about RSM in the past, as an Audit Committee, we've determined that we should be doing a report card at the end of the year for presentation to the Board as to the performance of the audits, whether they were performed properly, adequately, et cetera. But staff should be part of that process, the Board should be part of that report card process. Secondarily, I'm a strong proponent in blue ribbon Audit Committee, which means that the Audit Committee will do a self-evaluation at the end of each year, and do we do our jobs well, and look out for the district as well, because we are on revolving terms, and that does not mean we are guaranteed reappointment. And again, the Board should have the ability to make the determination, is this Audit Committee operating in the manner to which they hoped it would, and if they are not, what are self-identified weaknesses that could be addressed?
Thank you. Ms. Jordan?
I just wanted to remind us, when we started this in 2020, we had the audit plan, collectively, we came up with that audit plan with RSM, and the first thing on their list was waste fraud, the lighthouse, getting all that stuff up, that was the very first thing. And then, I was trying to go back to all of this, I know construction was one of them, so they did the assessment plan, as Mr. Cohen was saying, they assess the situation of where, and set priorities of what is the most, of the most important, and we did do exactly that with the very first term with them, and that's where we came up with the construction and the waste fraud abuse, lighthouse, and I can't find the other, but there was several that we had. Once they completed that, then they were to come back to us, and then they went and started the other one, and then they continued on. So that's how that went. And they just got so worked up because of the fact that they had to come back for every single little thing, they were unable to continue their work, so that was a little bit frustrating for them. That's pretty much why they left from here. But I know going forward, you know, they are truly wanting to work with the Audit Committee, you know, and the Audit Committee is there to assist the Board. The Board still has the total control over whatever takes place, because of the fact of who we are. But I just wanted to share and shed some light, because, and if maintenance is one of those, when they redo the assessment, then certainly that would be, come back before us, and we would make that decision, is that where we want to be. So I just wanted to just put a little bit of history to this.
Thank you, Ms. Jordan. Ms. Gittens?
I think, Mr....
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Davis?
I'm good, thank you. Ava's addressed.
Oh, okay, okay.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes, if I may, the other thing is, I had mentioned earlier that the Chairs of the Advisory Committees should be part of that risk assessment process. The Board should be part of that risk assessment process. If Ms. Vaughn has concern about maintenance and the risk attributes of maintenance, she should bring it to light with the auditors, and let them understand her rationale for why it needs to percolate towards the top, as well as every other Board member. Because I'm sure everybody has their own ideas as to where the risk lies within the district, RSM should be very objective coming in, and walk away objective, and put together an objective risk assessment and audit plan based off of that risk assessment.
All right, thank you.
If I may just try and...
Ms. Patrica, then, Ms. Jordan?
Thank you.
Just want to ask if the experience and expertise of the RSM staff that's on-site here in the district is something that will be evaluated by you?
It absolutely would be.
Great.
We would be meeting with the T members and understand what their requisite skill sets are, and that's why Mr. Davis is here, because he could obviously challenge anybody who's touching upon information technology.
Great. And that would be any area that was audited? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any further information or discussion?
I just wanted to, as a reminder again, that was, Mr. Cohen, thank you for bringing that up, but that was definitely a part of the assessment, was individually speaking to each one of us of our concerns. So yes, thank you for bringing that up.
Right. And Mrs. Gittens?
Okay, and just kind of an overview again on what Ms. Jordan was saying, that's, to me, the simplicity of this is looking at what areas need to be assessed, or assessed in this process. And where we're at right now is the start at IT, because we gave that opportunity to the Audit Committee to come up with, where do we begin? We also charged them... them with, do we begin with RSM? And their assessment of that was, and I believe you said it as like temporarily, this is where we will start. We will assess along the way and go from there. I do want to say, it is very, and I'm sure you two can both speak to this, it would be very difficult for us at this point to say, well, we don't want RSM to do anything at this point, because we are behind the eight ball, way behind in being in compliance. And it is, I don't want us to look at it as like, you know, the lesser of the evils. But we have worked with them. We did not have the expertise of this audit committee to help us with that. So, you know, we didn't know how to follow up. So now we do. And I, like they've all said, RSM is willing to, you know, to work this through. The audit committee is willing to work with RSM with certain caveats. And I believe everyone can walk away from the table getting what they need, and we would be in compliance.
And that's the goal. Mrs. Vaughn?
Yeah, and I have one more question. And this is in light of the fact that in two, three, four months, we're going to have a new superintendent. So the thing that I thought we had also looked at when we did our original list with RSM, and something that I think it would behoove us to look at as we get a new administration, is I know personally, I have long felt that we are quite top-heavy in this district and that we have jobs that are redundant. And, you know, that's going to be a huge task, or actually, it should be an ongoing task, but it's going to be a huge task, which makes me wonder if that kind of an audit would suit us more to start with something like that, look at the efficiencies. And then, once the new superintendent comes in, because I'm assuming that the cybersecurity, risk management is going to be, well, definitely more technical. And, you know, it may mean a lot more money invested if we have outdated equipment. I don't know. But, and I guess maybe some of my thoughts on, you know, what does an auditor do in terms of helping the district was geared more toward money. And obviously, there could be millions and millions of dollars if our cyber system is hacked. And I realize that. But maybe one of you gentlemen can clarify for me, what is appropriate? And would something like an audit of job efficiencies as we get a new superintendent and new administration coming in in the next several months, is that something that would rate fairly high?
Ms. Vaughn, I think Mr. Davis is going to respond.
So I'd like the chance to respond to that. So, and I just pulled this up on my phone. So in the last two years, there's been six attacks on municipalities. Collier County had to pay $184,000 of taxpayer dollars as a result of their cyber attack. Riviera Beach had to pay $600,000 associated with cybersecurity attack. Now, these are not one-off occurrences. They're occurring. So I understand your concerns from a fiscal perspective in terms of redundancy. HR structure should be baseline with like-sized school districts across the state of Florida. I understand that. I don't know if that's a well-situated thing for an overarching internal audit, as opposed just a rightsizing from an HR perspective. So my concern would be there, you don't want your auditors to make a determination that you're top-heavy. You can make, your auditors could evaluate that you have certain senior leadership positions that don't exist in other similar-sized school districts. But in terms of what the risk is, and the risk is to the students and to the people of Lee County, these attacks are happening. They're impacting our individuals. So yes, I'm the IT auditor. Naturally, I think IT is incredibly important. So I just, I would be concerned if we start to prioritize on top of that or potentially look at running redundant, like, listen, we could run parallel audits if that's what the board chooses to do. But that IT risk assessment exists on every single corporate risk assessment right now. HERC Rentals has it, Hertz has it, Arthrex has it, all of them, because they all know what the risk is, not just from a financial ransomware perspective, but data loss. You're talking personally identifying information, not just of your students, but of their families and whatnot. So that risk is hard to quantify. I think HERC holds $10 million in cybersecurity insurance to safeguard our employees as such. So in terms of all audits, all risks to the board need to be evaluated based off the likelihood and the impact that they would cause. When RSM comes in to do a risk assessment, they should be, that's how they should be quantifying that risk. So in my mind, it's hard to quantify a risk to our students, to our families of Lee County as it relates to their data and to our systems that all of their data resides in. Again, as an IT guy, that's just naturally, I take precautions on my personal systems as it is.
If I could expand on that?
Mr. Cohen?
I am not a subject matter expert. I am a generalist when it comes to internal audit. However, what you brought out, Ms. Vaughn, we had Gibson in. Gibson did an efficiency study. They are more prepared to assess whether or not we are top-heavy, where the efficiencies can be best utilized. And I know they saved the district a considerable amount of money during the performance of their work. The issue you run into with internal audit, if they determine that you are top-heavy, and now suddenly you do not have proper oversight because they said, it's great if you get rid of these several people, but now suddenly nobody is reviewing work, and now you have deficiencies, the first person you go back to is the internal auditor. But you told us, we can live without this person. You can live without that person, but you need to put in other controls. And if you don't put in the other controls, you needed that body in place. That's where the difference lies. Internal audit's role is to mitigate risk to the district. A consultant's job is to find efficiencies, very separate and distinct. Where the line kind of gets blurred is with best practice recommendations that internal audit is charged with. And they can bring forward best practices, but they are not going to bring forward the best practice of eliminate 25% of your administrative staff, because that money could be best utilized for hiring of teachers, support staff, et cetera. That's not a position where your internal auditor, that is something that a Gibson would be better positioned to perform on behalf of the board.
Okay. Thanks for the clarification. Thank you. Ms. Morgan?
And that's exactly what I was going to say. We're talking operational audit. We've had one, and then we didn't pursue it at the next level. And that, but that is probably something that the next superintendent will want to visit as part of his or district orientation. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other further comments or information, gentlemen?
Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Okay. Ms. Jordan and Ms. Gittens?
I was going to just say thank you very much. And then also, hopefully, RSM and Mr. Dupree Bruno are working on their, the SOW to bring back to us, so we can get that moving.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, then we'll be in compliance. Thank you. Ms. Gittens?
And that's what I was going to say, just closing this out. Thank you so much. We, we as a board should be very proud of the people that we have appointed, especially to this specific committee, because as you can see and hear from them, they are the experts that bring us the information that we don't know, and I don't have time to learn. So we appreciate you being there. The next step is that Attorney Bruno is working with RSM on the SOW. And I believe we have a date of the 22nd. But the next part of this will be a discussion similar with RSM. So you have all the information from the audit committee. You have the, you have the first sample SOW, and I believe they're working on it. And Attorney Bruno will give us the most updated one to look at. And that next meeting that we have like this, RSM will be either here in person or by phone to answer any questions that you might have. And I thank you both so much for taking time out of your busy day to be here.
Yes. Thank you to you and the rest of the audit committee. We appreciate.
Thank you, Gittens. You too.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have attorney tips. So I'll turn the floor over to Attorney Dupree Bruno.
Thank you. I'm going to sit in the presentation.
Okay.
Thank you.
What is she doing?
Sit over there.
Thank you, board. First thing, excuse me, the first thing that I wanted to, just a reminder, because we are, can you hear me okay?
No, I don't think it's on.
Can you hear me better?
Yes.
Okay, good. Thank you. The first thing that I wanted to just bring up is because we are entering into election season. So I wanted to remind the board, as well as candidates, that we do have a board policy that addresses campaigning on school property. That's Board Policy 2.04. And it specifically says that one cannot campaign on any school board property. And that also extends to emails. If you're sending emails with slogans or logos from a campaign, please do not do that, because that's also a violation of the policy. We cannot petition on school board property. Don't wear badges, don't wear apparel or anything else that will be campaigning on school board policy, on property pursuant to Board Policy 2.04. So that's the first thing. The next thing that I wanted to, just a reminder, that we do have an ethics and education policy. And that ethics and education policy actually covers everybody. Section 2F discusses the notices that we'll be providing to the public and to other individuals. Section 4 of 1.28 actually discusses the covered individuals, and that includes all district staff. That includes school board members. That excludes, that includes outside contractors, vendors, visitors, and volunteers. So everybody is covered under Board Policy 1.28. And the other thing I wanted to just point out very quickly, pursuant to the policy, is what kind of things are we looking at and that we're asking be prohibited pursuant to the ethics and education policy? Well, the first one is harassment or discrimination. It is clear from this policy, as well as other school board policy, as well as state and federal law, that you cannot discriminate or harass anyone based on their race, color, religion, sex, creed, sexual orientation, national or ethnic origin, marital status, pregnancy, political affiliation, union, membership status, age, gender identity or expression, disability, or anything else that is unlawful. So I just want to remind from the board members all the way up to the community that we do have a very strong non-discrimination, non-harassment policy. In addition, the other things that I wanted to point out is with regards to misrepresentation or falsification. Again, from constituents all the way to board members and everybody in between, the policy is very clear that if you knowingly and willfully falsify or conceal a material fact, making a false, fictitious, fraudulent statement or representation, or knowingly making or using any false document, that is a violation of Board Policy 1.28. And then, we have some other things in terms of institutional privilege for personal gains. Those are also identified, again, from everybody, from board member all the way to our community members. Please just keep in mind Board Policy 1.28, ethics and education. The other thing that I wanted to originally talk about was, I've gotten a lot of concern about sunshine, questions about sunshine, when does it apply, how does it apply, what does it mean? And I wanted to talk about a case, Sarasota versus Citizens for Responsible Government versus the city of Sarasota, as well as Florida Statute 286.011, which is our sunshine policy. However, I realize that perhaps before delving into the actual case law and the statute, we may need a little primer. And then at the next briefing, I'll go into the specific case as well as the statute itself. As an attorney, we have a lot of things that are innate, but sometimes we forget that others have not had the same type of training and may not see everything from the same lens or the same view and may not process the same way. So I'm going to go back to some fundamentals. And it's from Ms. Gittens. I want to thank her for this, because Mrs. Gittens brought some Girl Scouts to the boardroom, and they were getting their government badge. And then that's when I realized that, you know what, sometimes we just need a refresher of the basics and the fundamentals of our judicial system, judicial power, what constitutes actual law. There is a fundamental principle that is within our society that goes back to our very foundation, our founding, which is that we hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, and they are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights, and that amongst these rights are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. And to secure these rights, governments are instituted among men to be governed by the power for the consent of the governed. I think I messed up on my last part, but it's basically, the consent of the governed is what gives us the power to be able to effectuate the protections of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. That's from the Declaration of Independence, 1776. That is the basic and the basis of a lot of our laws and our governmental structure. So the first thing that I just wanted to bring up is the preamble of both the Florida Constitution, as well as the United States Constitution. A preamble is usually the first thing that's in a legal document, and it kind of gives you a summary, almost like a mission statement. What is this document going to tell us? What is the purpose of this document? What is it trying to achieve and accomplish? So for the United States Constitution, it states that we, the people of the United States, in order to form a more perfect union, a more perfect union, establish justice, ensure domestic tranquility, provide for the common defense, promote the general warfare, and secure the blessings of liberty to ourselves and our posterity, everybody who comes behind us, to ordain, do ordain and establish this Constitution of the United States of America. Extremely, extremely powerful words. For the, we can skip that slide. For the preamble of the Florida Constitution, it states, we, the people of the state of Florida, being grateful to Almighty God for our constitutional liberty in order to secure its benefits, perfect our government, ensure domestic tranquility, maintain public order, and guarantee equal civil and political rights to all, do ordain and establish this Constitution. There are nine articles in the United States Constitution, and Article 3 is the one that talks about the judiciary and the creation of the judicial power. The Florida Supreme Court is the highest court in our land. And then you have other, what they call inferior courts, or the appellate court or the trial court in the federal system. Go to the next one. And then in our state constitution, you have Article 5, which talks about the various courts, including the Florida Supreme Court, the District Courts of Appeals, Circuit Courts, and County Courts. Now, the reason I bring this up, because sometimes we have to understand what judicial power is. I have, and that's why I don't want to go into the case yet, because I've had questions from constituents about what, what is this case, or what, you know, I've heard people say that common law only applies to common people and statutes apply to... say that common law only applies to common people and statutes apply to these people, just different confusing understandings of what judicial power is and what our law is actually made out of. And one of the things with regards to judicial power is the interpretation of laws. So the Congress creates the laws, they have bills, it goes through the process, eventually it's signed by the President, or in the state's case, it's signed by the governor, and those become our statutes. But then, the judiciary comes in and they actually interpret those laws. Go to the next slide. So what makes up the law are statutes, codes, regulations, all of the case law, which are the interpretations of law by the appellate courts, we call that sometimes common law, opinions that are rendered by different governmental agencies such as the Attorney General, the guidelines that are provided by different departments such as the Department of Education, the executive orders that may be signed by the President, all of these ordinances, policies, and they're just a whole vast array of law and rules. One thing, for example, when you're looking at judicial process, is you're, you have the right to appeal a decision. So if you go to court and you find out that there's maybe, you disagree with the judge's application of a particular statute to facts, then the process is that you appeal to a higher court, which is a constitutionally right that you have to appeal, and then the appellate court will make a decision. Sometimes they'll issue a written order, sometimes they don't, but when they do issue that written order, that becomes case law, that becomes common law, that becomes law that you also have to consider when you're trying to figure out what is the law. So next time, we'll actually talk about the case that I want to talk about, which is Sarasota Citizens for Responsible Government versus the City of Sarasota, which talks about Sunshine. Thank you for the few minutes to be able to update on the law.
Thank you. Board members, comments, Ms. Patrica.
Can I tell a funny story about, about the Supreme Court? So my one-year anniversary for my marriage, I went to Washington DC because we're geeks, and that's what we wanted to do, and I got a behind-the-scenes tour of the United States Supreme Court. That's like the equivalent of, like, meeting Mac Jones or Bill Belichick. It's like a big deal. So like, you have that bulletproof glass, and the public is over here, and we were over here. Did you know that the justices hang their robes on just a regular hook? Like, you would think a Supreme Court Justice, it would be like, a big deal, it's just a regular hook. Anyways, top floor of the United States Supreme Court Building, you walk up the stairs and to the right, there's like an old weight room with Nautilus training from like when I was a kid, and then you, in front of you, there's like a locker room, and to the left, there's a basketball court. There's a, there's a basketball court on the top floor of the United States Supreme Court Building. It's the highest court in the land. Get it?
No.
You'll never forget that.
Where's my symbols when I need them?
Thank you, Mrs. Patrica. Any other questions or comments for Attorney Bruno? Thank you for this presentation and information.
Thank you.
Then that was quick. Moving right along, next on the agenda, we have Academic Services Instructional Materials, K-12 Math Textbook Adoption. And for this, we have Dr. Quisenberry, Ms. Houghton, Ms. Olivado, and Karen Baber. Welcome.
Thank you for having us to present for our instructional materials adoption, and this year was math K to 12. Thank you for introducing us. I am Bethany Quisenberry. I'm the Director for Elementary Curriculum and Instruction. Lori Houghton is Director for Middle School Curriculum and Instruction. Candace is our counterpart for High School, and then we have Karen Baber, who is the Coordinator for Instructional Materials.
Welcome.
So we just want to start off with a quick review for some of the changes that have been happening. So first, last year, we adopted for ELA, and we started talking about the new best standards. So last year, the new best standards were implemented only, I'm sorry, this year, the new best standards were implemented only for K to 2 for ELA. Moving into next school year, even though we adopted for those materials last year, it was only implemented for K to 2. Moving into next school year, ELA best standards will be implemented for 3 to 12, as well as math, K to 12. So math, they didn't do that same slow adoption, they pushed it all out for K to 12 at the same time.
So we started our adoption process back in June, where I contacted the publishers when it came out for, we got the bid list. I met with them at the end of August, and we started that process of making the selections for our committees and posting our access to the digital materials as well. Our committees were selected in September, and then we had, at the end of September, we had the best standards training for the committee. And our staff wanted to make sure we trained the teachers and the students on the best standards, so they fully understood when they were reviewing those textbooks, what they were looking for, and making sure that it aligned during, to our rubric, and making sure that those best standards were covered. Also, at the end of September, we had the publisher showcase, and this is a community event that is always open to the public, where the community can come in and meet with the publishers and ask them questions and just look through the materials. Unfortunately, we had planned on in-person, but things got a little high at the time, so we changed that, we adjusted and changed it back to virtual for this past year in September. And so, but we posted the links to all the rooms where the publishers were, the public was, had access, our teachers had access, our students had access to meet with them virtually. At the end of, or the middle of October, we did our adoption process training, so we kind, we train our, we have two nights where we train our committees, which is required training on the process of what we do, which is that interest-based bargaining technique and training. And we go through, we set our goals, we set our norms, and we are all prepared for our presentations, which happened at the last week of October. During that time, we actually did have in-person presentations, so our publishers were able to come in and, and meet with our teachers and students and community members during that, where they were able to see and view all those materials. And then we always gave them a week to go back to their schools, meet with their teachers, because these teachers are representing their, their school voice. And so they went back, met with their teams, met with their teachers, explained what they saw, and was gathering input to bring back to our deliberation process, which happened that first week in, in November. And we all came to consensus, where everybody agreed on the materials. So all our teachers, the students that were represented, and the community members on that committee, they all came to consensus, they all had their say and their input.
So our committee makeup is varied. The principal selects the teachers at the elementary level. We ask for, the principals to recommend two teachers, one primary and one intermediate. And then from there, we balance that out, so that we make sure that each zone has a good cross-representation of kindergarten, first, second, third, fourth, and fifth, so that they can bring those perspectives when they're reviewing the materials. At the middle school, we ask that they recommend a teacher for the Core 6 to 8, but also one for Algebra, so that we partner with the high schools and we can make sure that the materials are meeting our middle school's needs as well as the high school. And then at the high school, they have representation for Algebra and Geometry, High School Honors, and High School College Prep, if they have those courses. So they send representation for that as well. We also advertised for approximately a month, and we asked for community members. We did have a community member serve for the elementary level, and a community member serve at the middle school level. And then one of the things I'm very proud of in the change in our process is the student perspective. The student perspective, and so this is about our third adoption that we've had students sit on the committee, and they actually really engage in the discussions, and they really give us their, you know, opinion, strongly like it, strongly don't, here's why. And so we had a middle school member, and we had two high school members this year. So that was the makeup of our committees.
So the recommendations that our committees gave for elementary was Savis and Vision Florida. We wanted to have you hear what they want, and we invited them, but with what's going on in the schools, they're needed there. So we did, were able to get most of some say from them. So I'm gonna play a quick little video from a, one.
Hi, my name is Tiffany Adams, and I am the Assistant Principal at Edgewood Academy. I recently had the honor of being on the new Math Adoption Committee. I have had the honor of doing this several times while I worked in Lee County. This one was a little different than any other ones I'd ever, ever done, because no one was really 100% sure on these new best standards that we're getting. So the team downtown, our math department, did a really good job at the beginning of getting us comfortable with the standards, really knowing what was gonna be expected with the new ones, how deep they were gonna be required to do, what was the hands-on piece gonna look like. So as a team, we were ready to look at the curriculum with the light of the new best standards, rather than going in a little bit less prepared than we thought we would have been. So as a committee, after we were able to feel comfortable with the standards, that made us able to support, not support, but look at specifically the curriculum and look at some of the components that we really felt would be beneficial to not only the teachers, but the families, as well as the students, as we bridge this gap into the new best standards as a district. So some of the pieces that we felt were crucial, that we looked, decided as a committee, was the homeschool connection piece, the assessments, what would those look like, the content that was in there, was, was it aligned to the standards, was it not? The digital materials, now that we're one-to-one Chromebooks, what kind of digital materials did they have for us to support this? And also, professional development for the teachers. So they were getting the support they needed, not only with the new standards, but with how the new standards were to be taught in the classroom. So once we had decided and created a rubric as a team, we were invited down to the district to watch the five publishing companies present to us, and they all, we judged them all with the same rubric. We looked for strengths and weaknesses of the companies, and many of the companies had similar aspects, and we liked some things better than the other. Many times, it was funny, we talked about, even on the day that we were deliberating for which book, that some of the, we wished we could just like take the companies and put them together. So we kind of had to realize early on that not one book would fit 100% of the rubric, but we could find one that would best fit the needs of Lee County and the direction that we're going as far as problem-based learning, and then the hands-on piece with the manipulatives. So after we met, we watched the companies present to us, we met again as a team, and we spent an entire day really digging into the curriculum as individual companies. We used two rubrics that day, we used a shorter rubric to go through all the companies at first, and then after deliberating a few as a group, we were able to narrow it down to three companies. And what we did was, we decided on one standard to look at across all three companies and compare how it was being taught vertically, as far as from kindergarten to fifth, how did it align with the standards, how are they teaching it? So it allowed us to have a deeper view of these companies as a whole. So after looking at all the companies, none of them received a full score on the rubric, so we had to start looking at some of the more crucial components to see what would help us to better deliberate which company we wanted to go with. So the company that we decided on as a committee was Savis, so why did we choose Savis? So there was a couple of things that kind of stood out to us. One of them is there was a really strong homeschool connection, where on the homework pages, there is a QR code for families to scan, and they can get homework help right there at home from their phones just by scanning the QR code. There was ELL support embedded throughout. There was also professional development that was offered to the teachers before teaching a lesson and before chapters, so they could kind of get an idea for what the lessons will look like and how it will be taught. But the final deciding factor was that Savis was the one that we could find that actually fully aligned to a few of the standards that we looked at, where the other books were lacking, missing one component here or another component there as far as the standard and how deep it needed to be taught, or some of the critical, critical aspects of the standard. So we decided that as a committee that although each curriculum had a couple things the same, and they had things that we liked about each, it was really important to go along with one that really fully taught the standards and aligned with them the best. So as a selection committee, all of our voices together, we were able to come to consensus and decide that we would push forward with Savis. And we really felt that this would be a great resource to the teachers moving forward to continue again with that problem-based learning and that hands-on, and then as we look at these new best standards, to make sure we're really supporting the teachers as we move into next year.
So Tiffany did a really great job about briefing you really on that whole process, and I will say, all of our committees really did that same process with everything they reviewed. So the next group was the middle school math group. They selected McGraw-Hill Florida Reveal Math, and we had asked our student Julian, who is an eighth-grade student in Lee High Acres Middle School, if he would send us a video, and he got very shy that he just sent an email. So I do have his email that I'd like to read to you on his thoughts on the adoption, the process, and why he liked McGraw-Hill. "What I liked most about McGraw-Hill textbook is the access to Alex. I use this program a lot for Algebra to master the concepts. I really enjoyed being a part of the selection process on behalf of students. Discussing the books with everybody and my teacher, Mrs. Goodwin, made it even better. Thank you for the opportunity." So that was Julian and his thoughts on McGraw-Hill. The high school AGA group selected Savis as well, and we do, again, we asked a student, and it's interesting, last year we had ELA, and I did make this comment earlier, how different our ELA teachers and students felt about expressing their feelings about this process as opposed to our math teachers and students. So I'd like to introduce Dennis, and here he is.
Good afternoon. My name is Dennis, and this year, I got the chance to serve on the Algebra II High School Textbook Adoption Committee. Not only did I take into account alignment with state standards and teachers' ease of access, but also things that are making it easier for me and others as students. This year, the Textbook Adoption Committee for Algebra II chose Savis as their textbook, and this was because its alignment with Florida standards, its strong assessments, and its heavy teacher support. But me personally, I chose this textbook because of its up-to-date digital concept and engaging workbook. Once again, I am very thankful for serving on this committee.
Okay, so that was, that was Dennis. And then for our high school honors group, they selected for Precálculus and Probability and Statistics. I have Jacob, another student, and again, he gave his thoughts on the process or in the selection.
My name is Jacob Musich, and I'm a tenth grade at Dunbar High School. The HS honors committee chose freedom, that freedom with the problem stats, because it is a base for high school students and not college students. The textbooks gloritized noble stats, teachers liked it as a line with standards, and it chose Savis once it, the HS Precálculus, because it was more detailed. It had real-world applications embedded, and they all liked the math, my math lab online access. It provided resources to support multi-year students.
Okay. And our high school prep, college prep, selected Cengage for Math for College, Algebra. They selected Savis Elementary Statistics for Math for College Statistics. They They selected Savvas Thinking Mathematically for Math for College Liberal Arts. And for one of the new courses, Math for Data and Financial Literacy, they selected Cengage's Financial Algebra Tax Update. So the estimated cost currently is $10,868,188.40 broken down. And that is if we do the premium package for all students, digital, for teachers and students. So a lot of things are going, could change based on our funding from the state, what, the numbers always are fluctuating and changing. So, and then of course, us working with the publishers to get the correct package and what we need for us and what's gonna be work best for us. So our elementary, based on our current numbers, would bring us to $4,596,185. Middle School, $1,911,324. Our high school AGA, $2,315,421. Our high school's honors, both programs together, would be $489,418.40. And then our high school prep courses, those four courses total would be $1,555,840.
So then looking at where are we now in the process with everything that's going on? We have our instructional materials review site that is linked to curriculum and instruction. It's also linked here for public access that takes us back through the timeline and our next steps now that we've presented to the board. The next piece that we have will be, we'll put this up for public hearing. It's important to note that on this page, there's access for community members to be able to go in, for parents to go in, and any teachers that would like to go back in and review these materials. Those publishers that were just presented to you for approval are there with access codes. So on this page, this is where all the information we went over today with our timelines can be found for our public. And again, any of our teachers, families that would like to be able to go out there and see it. In addition, the prices that Karen just shared with you, you have a more detailed breakdown in your backup material that broke out when we say the full package, what's included within those packages. So you heard a lot from the teachers and the students that it was important to have digital access, but also hands-on pieces there in supporting the students. So you have that full breakdown there as well. And with that, we are open to any questions that you have.
Okay, Mrs. Gittens.
I have a quick one. It may be crazy, but I'm always told that there's no crazy question, right? This might be. But when we get digital books, is it easier if there's an update or something to it? So once we get the digital book, then do we pay extra when something else new comes out? How does that work?
So typically with anything that needs to be changed digitally, they will do it and go ahead and update the digital books.
At no cost?
Mm-mm.
Okay. Does that happen often?
Not much, but there are times that it has and that they have, they'll make those changes on the websites.
And now that we've done digital and Chromebooks and all that for a little while, give us some feedback on how, how is that working academically with our students?
I'll just give one piece of feedback for our science adoption two years ago. And this was on me, when I first came into this role because we had not been through what we've been through. And so when we purchased science materials, we did not purchase digital for elementary because at that time, it wasn't a big need. And so when the pandemic hit, we did not have digital access to our student books. So on that side, it's extremely important for them to have access to digital, even all the way down to kindergarten.
As well as print. And we do still feel that that mixture of print and digital is very important for the teachers and students, that they, they still can access their materials, but yet they're still doing that hands-on touch feel and writing out problems and things like that.
So when they're in the classroom, they have a set of books that they do hands-on, right? And academically, have, how are we doing that between using digital and using hands-on? Any thought?
So I think right now, we're living in a very heavy digital because of everything that we've just come out of and are still actually in. We're trying to make that shift back though to a better balance where students are doing more hands-on because there is research tied to processing and memory by doing all of those touch writing pieces there. So we're finding that balance again as we're getting back into classrooms and re-engaging students into that discourse versus that hasn't been where we were for the last almost two years due to the pandemic.
And are we finding that there are students that flourish more in the digital than the other? And how do we address that within a class?
Well, a lot of the new resources, we're fortunate, they're doing a lot more instruction on digital. So a student who didn't receive it for whatever reason, wasn't feeling well in class, can then go home and kinda get a recap of the lesson, you know, with the tutorial support. So we see that nice balance there. And then when we do order print, we always order enough that a student can check it out and take it home if they do better, you know, with the book. And then many of them also come with workbooks. So that's in print as well. So I think it's pretty varied so that teachers can respond to the students' needs based on that. Cause like I'm a visual learner. So I would be wanting to read it myself and not be read to. So you have to take into account all of the modalities.
Right. And then there's also the digital divide issue. So thank you very much, ladies.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Vaughn and then Ms. Patrica.
Just a few quick questions. I'm assuming that there's a good sync between the Savvas and the McGraw-Hill. Cause it looks like you've got then the Savvas for high school also, but it all blends in. Okay. Under high school college prep, Math for Data and Financial Literacy, is this a text that's geared toward new mandates from the legislature for financial literacy?
So this is a brand-new course that'll be implemented for next year, 2223. So it's one that they worked on hearing all of the needs out there for financial literacy, but it ties really closely with the mathematics of it. So if you remember years ago, we had a course for financial literacy, but that one kinda fell by the wayside. This is coming back. Our plan right now as a district is this will be a course that will follow our typical progression and be afforded to all ninth through 12th grade students. We're in the process of getting this course NCAA approval though as well. So that's a piece of it with it being brand-new. We need to make sure we're aware of how this will impact athletes, but we are very excited to have it on the list for all of our high school students.
Okay. But isn't there some pending legislation about financial literacy?
There's a current piece that's in there that we have to have financial literacy. That's picked up through our economics courses though. And there's the econ and econ with financial literacy. Both of them meet current statute. This would be a brand-new course though, really tailored to that math side of it.
Okay. So whether a student takes this in ninth grade or 12th grade, it's still college prep?
This course is underneath mathematics for data and financial literacy. It's geared more so that way. It's not necessarily labeled as a college preparatory class in isolation though.
We lumped it in when we reviewed it with that group of the college prep. So it was a little separate, but it really didn't fit in any other group. So we kinda laid it on them to work with it and select it.
Okay. But it could fit in after Algebra I or after-
Yes. So we, it could fit in after Algebra I. It could fit in after geometry. I could take it as a senior. It has a lot of different places where it could fit. Right now, looking at our tentative draft progression though, it would be after you take geometry. So you would still go Algebra I, geometry, and then this has a really good fit in that mathematics, data, financial literacy because you have a foundation. But to Karen's point, we asked a lot of teachers to participate. So this course doesn't fit with the honors class. It doesn't fit with Algebra Geometry. So we grouped it. So the same teachers reviewing the college four classes also reviewed this textbook.
Okay. And is this, did you find that the lower-grade math books had units in them on financial literacy? Or is that dealt with anywhere in middle school?
Not in elementary.
In middle, yeah, in middle.
Go ahead.
And I'll just repeat it. So the financial literacy standards directly start in the ninth through 12th grade curriculum. So while you have us up here, you also have our very small but mighty math team in the audience as well today. So that's where it explicitly starts is ninth grade.
Okay. And finally, I remember several years ago when I was on the Curriculum Advisory Committee and this math adoption was, was put off for these very reasons. And I seem to remember that there were some concerns or at least mentions of the fact that certain key concepts in elementary school, I don't know, like fractions or, do you teach telling time? Make you change. I don't know. You know, I'm not a math person.
Standards have moved, yes, to your point.
Certain key concepts might have right now been second grade and they moved it to third or vice versa. Have, have you run into any issues or problems with that, especially with the kids that hit those levels where it used to be taught here? Like they're not getting it at all or they're getting it twice? How have you dealt with that?
Yeah, some of the standards have, have moved from one grade level to the other. And Nick, do you wanna give more specifics? If you want more specifics, Nick can come up here and give you very specifics.
I don't need real specifics, but has that, that has happened?
Yes, it has definitely happened. And because of the way that we're pushing it all out at one time. So on the adoption that you were on before, they pushed it out a little bit at a time, different grade levels at a time. And so try not to hit those holes. And with this, it all being pushed out at one time, there will be incidences where the students came into the grade level and it should have been taught the grade level before and it no longer is.
We'll build those into the instructional guide so they're not missing instruction. And then we'll, once we catch them up, then we'll change the instructional guides back to just those grade level standards. So we may have to marry some grade levels for the first couple of years so that students don't have any gaps.
Okay, yeah. I knew you were on top of it because I remember that discussion from several years ago. But I just wondered how difficult it's been.
Yeah, absolutely. There've been a lot of changes as far as where standards fall, but all of them are still in developmentally appropriate places. So kids aren't seeing time at a place where they haven't had the background in that. Fractions start a little earlier than they did in the past, just on their coding, but they're still taught through shapes and it's still through the basics. So nothing falls in a place where it would be a giant obstacle for a child. It falls right in their typical learning path.
Okay, yeah. I was just curious how that all worked out. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or, oh, Ms. Patrica.
When will this come before the board for a vote? Please?
I, well, the next step is to post the public hearing. And then I believe it'll probably be about a month.
Excellent. And I think this is one of the things, one of the many things that we do incredibly well. And whenever you guys come in front of us with a textbook adoption, I'm so impressed with the way that committee really rolls up their sleeves and digs in. And just thank you, because I also know it's hard work. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Jordan?
Okay. And it does say on here, March 8th, we're adoption of materials and May 10th to authorized purchase. My, my question is, thank you very much for the presentation. Really appreciate that. But are the, when I'm looking at the committees, because you know people are always talking about how did we not get on a committee? So we advertised like the community, we put that out there for anyone to apply who wished to had participate, correct?
We actually extended the date for, I believe, a week longer just because we had only had the two that had asked to be on it at that time. And so we wanted to like really give that opportunity and not take that away should they wanna go. And so we left it up. We had it advertised on there.
And then the, so then all these, the committees, for each one of them, there's like 116, I think I counted, that is 116. So the high school AGA is, are not the same teachers that are in the high school honors. They're different teachers completely.
Correct.
So we had 116 actually applied to be on this committee, but had more applied, we would have been able to have more on there. Okay. I just wanna put that, so nobody's thinking we're picking and choosing. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jordan. Ms. Gittens?
Yes, my question had to do with that as well. When you look at the committees, where is the Curriculum Advisory Committee in this? This was on slide five with the committees.
So we did ask for a Curriculum Advisory Committee member and we did not have one, but we sorta did because Julian's mom brought him and really attended all of the, so even though she didn't serve as a voting member, she's a member of our advisory and she was there throughout the adoption, even though she didn't wanna be part of the committee. So she was there through the process the whole way. But we did ask them and invited them to the publisher showcase. And, and we have given them updates, I believe twice so far on the process. And we're slated to do it again at this next meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Awesome.
Thank you. Any other comments? Ladies, thank you. And we are right on time. Thank you very much. That means we get to eat today.
And, and next we have our Exceptional Student Education team coming to join us. Teresa Bowen, Susan Ellinger, Scott Kozlowski, and Eliana Tardio.
She was a teacher. She had to know how to do that.
Welcome.
Good afternoon, board members. Dr. Savage and team. My name is Teresa Bowen. I'm the Director of Exceptional Student Education. And I have with me today Scott Kozlowski, Susan Ellinger, the Assistant Directors, as well as Eliana Tardio, one of our parent members of our ESE Advisory. And we're excited to share with you our information today about our department, Exceptional Student Education. We're gonna begin today with a little bit of background knowledge. And I want to ensure that we're kind of all working with the same kind of common language. And I find it easier when we do speaking engagements such as this, that we all kind of have that opportunity to be working with the same understanding of our language in the exceptional student education field. The first thing that I usually discuss when I'm speaking to audiences about students with disabilities is what's called person-first language. It is a way to provide a kind of a communication hint to others when speaking about students with disabilities to reflect a respectful and non-discriminatory language when communicating. And so simply put, what person-first language is about is emphasizing the person first rather than their abilities or disabilities in that respect. So an example of this, a good example of this is instead of saying something like the autistic students, we would say our students with autism. It's really as simple as that. It's also about labeling associated vocabulary with positive messages versus really emphasizing something that is wrong. So instead of saying something like they're on the handicapped buses, we would say they ride buses with accessibility features or they're on the accessible buses. So that's just a little bit about kind of the language that we try to use. It is, you know, sometimes we catch our own selves, you know, making those mistakes, but we really try to emphasize that through all of our written and our verbal communication. Again, if you ever have any questions about, you know, or you're, you're thinking, the best bet is to just ask the person that you're talking about what they prefer. because everybody prefers things a little differently. So we're going to talk a little bit about the state of Florida and what they consider exceptional student education to be. It is the way that we provide supports to schools and other stakeholders in their efforts to provide those educational services to eligible students. So when we talk about eligible students, you have a list of the eligibility categories that are in our state under exceptional student education. It begins always with the federal level and federal laws. And in this case, we're talking about IDEA, the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. Now, all of these areas that are listed here fall under IDEA except for giftedness. Gifted is not a category that is covered under the IDEA. It is considered an exceptional student area, education area in the state of Florida, not in all states, but in in our state. But it does not fall under the protections of the IDEA as a disability. From the federal laws, you then have the state laws. So we have those, that baseline of federal law surrounding students with disabilities. And then additionally, the state can add another level through their Florida statutes and rules, which our state does frequently. And so they add another layer of compliance that we need to be involved with. And from there, we have our local policies and procedures. And most of you have seen those as they come through the board for approval every time the state asks us to revise that. But what those are is the state puts the laws into place that encompass IDEA and their state rules and then allows districts to create policies and procedures to meet those laws. And so that's really, all of those really surround these eligibility areas and how we evaluate for those and how we provide services for those areas of eligibility. So some important things to note about areas of eligibility because sometimes you'll look at that list and you'll say, well, I don't see dyslexia, for instance. Dyslexia is a disability, but it might not be, these are not are not kind of governed by names or labels. It's really about what the needs are of that category. So something like dyslexia, if a child is eligible, would fall under specific learning disability because each one of these areas encompass many different types of disabilities, not just one particular kind. So the other important piece, and that sometimes is hard when we're working with parents, is that a medical diagnosis of a disability doesn't automatically guarantee that your child is eligible for an IEP under exceptional student education. The state imposes several different types of educational evaluations as well as you have to meet the criteria for needing specialized instruction in order to have an individual education plan or an IEP. So you'll notice here as well, there are numbers next to each eligibility area. And what I've included was the number of students in each category that served in Lee County schools. And that's as of October of FTE. So it has changed a little bit since then. But you can definitely see where we have our, you know, our lower, our lower incident, incidents, disabilities and our higher incidents. I've also included a little tab over here in case anyone is interested in more of a history lesson on this. We won't go into detail here today. But the state of Florida provides a legislative history about exceptional student education. For some people, it's a surprise almost that we serve a lot of these students in our schools. And and so it's surprising that you can kind of go back and see that this just did not start 10 or 20 years ago. Inclusion isn't a new thing. That's always a big surprise sometimes to people when we're talking. So it's got a long history in the state of Florida and and this is a nice little tab that shows that.
Can I just ask one quick question?
Yes.
On that slide, gifted is, that just, you know, floors me as to, all the rest are like disabilities. And gifted is, you know, kind of different. How did it end up on this list?
It has been there for years and years. I like, I can't remember the exact year, but it is way before I think I was even born.
And me too.
However, I was just getting, I was just going to talk a little bit more about gifted because it is an area that we oversee in our department for compliance with eligibility and getting that education plan in place. However, the enrichment and instruction is really supported through our curriculum and instruction department. And this mirrors the way that the state operates when it comes to serving gifted under exceptional student education. So the Bureau of Exceptional Students and Student Services at the state level, they really serve to support districts, ESE departments with that compliance and eligibility piece. And then the Bureau of Instructional Supports and Standard Supports districts on the instructional end of pieces and the enrichment part.
And the interesting piece is, it's the largest part of ESE. Which is, does that mean that's the largest part of the funding as well?
So I don't mind helping chime in just a tiny bit here. So the, to my understanding, I believe it originated with kind of cognitive testing. Essentially what they're looking for was like several standard deviations above or below the pieces. So that exceptional doesn't have a positive or negative connotation, simply that it's by definition exceptional. So when you look at the total there by itself as a single classification, it would appear to be the largest. However, when you look at the aggregate of students in some cases who had maybe an IQ that qualified lower, you add those up, you might find that that the numbers aren't terribly different. And again, there's always, in terms of how people qualify, that has had several revisions over the years in terms of how students even qualify for various different types of services. So that's just the very, very minimum that I can offer.
No, thank you.
My pleasure.
It's just always jumped out at me as like, okay, anyway, thank you for letting me ask that now.
All right, so our next slide really talks about a three-year overview of the numbers of students with disabilities in Lee County. And we've always kind of, if you look at the scale of this graph, it's really a scale from 11,000 to 11,500. So we have always kind of gravitated for, I would say, the last at least 10 years over the 11,000 mark. But pre-pandemic, you can see we were at 11,485 students with disabilities in the district. And that dropped significantly during last year. And then again, this year with October's FTE, we were back up to 11,319. But that doesn't really tell the whole story. We continue to see an increase in the number of students coming through student enrollment with IEPs that are transferring from other states. In fact, from November through today, we've had 266 new students with IEPs come in. We have, we're feeling that as we, you know, I know our schools are feeling that. And one of the things that we did is really kind of looked at the data behind this because we have felt in our, kind of our hearts, without looking at the numbers, that our less significant students with disabilities were the ones that were leaving us, whereas we were pulling in more significant needs and students with needs. And that's exactly when you, when we pulled the data and looked at it and compared that from pre-pandemic until now, we see a 14.4% increase in students coming to us that need either a specialized classroom or center school placement. So when they do transfer to us, we have to provide comparable services on their IEP. And we have noticed that increase in that need. Additionally, we know that we hear, you know, we hear about behavior from schools. And we've seen, just with the numbers, a 13.1% increase in the number of students coming to us that have positive behavior intervention plans. And so those are some indicators that are really kind of hitting at what we knew from that, what we were hearing and really kind of matching that up to the data behind it. So in order to ensure that we're, you know, kind of clear about the students with disabilities that I'm speaking about today and that we serve out of our department, I wanted to give you a quick comparison of the two laws that are generally associated with disabilities in the educational setting. So you have section 504. I'm sure you've all heard of 504 plans and that's where this really falls. And that's, that five, the 504 plans are really supported out of our student services department. Those are students who are not eligible. They might have a disability and be affected by that, but they don't meet the eligibility criteria under the IDEA. And so what this is specifically for are those students that need accommodations to eliminate barriers so that they're able to access their educational environment. And it protects them from being discriminated against by not allowing them that access. Important information here is that these do not provide us with any additional funding. So there's no additional funding to support those needs that might appear on a 504 plan. And we cannot use IDEA funds to serve children that have 504 plans. So there's a distinction there between the two. Our students that are served under the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act are those that have that disability category. They've met the requirements that the state has put forth and it's adversely affecting their educational performance. And they are needing that supplemental educational experience with services and supports in order to be able to continue to progress in their educational environment. So with this, we serve students from age three all the way through their, through 21. And we do get additional funding for these students, federal funding through the students through the IDEA grant. These are the students that we work with and that we support through our department, the exceptional student education department. So when we talk about the funding for IDEA, that funding is specifically tied to the excess costs of educating a child with a disability. So it cannot pay for everything that's related to students with disabilities. You really have to ask two questions when we're looking at, does this funding kind of fit? And the two questions are, number one, in the absence of special education needs, would this cost exist? And then number two, is this cost also generated by non-disabled students? So if the answer is yes to either one, it's not considered an excess cost. And federal IDEA funding cannot be utilized for that. A good example, I like to kind of, I think it's easy for everyone to visualize, is that student desks. Regardless, every student is going to need a desk. However, you do have some students that may be like a student that might utilize a wheelchair, who might need a special desk, a different desk that would accommodate and fit him being able to use his or her wheelchair in order to access that desk. And so whereas just the general run-of-the-mill desks in the classroom are not an excess cost and we couldn't say, oh, these desks are for ESE students or students with disabilities, so we'll buy them with IDEA funds, we can't do that. We can only buy that adaptive equipment that we would, or adaptive furniture, those type of things. So when you're talking about furniture, I think that's an easy way to visualize those costs. Each year, we get approximately $19 million in IDEA funds. And that has been rather right around the same for the past few years with that $19 million. But again, that's not the full funding cost of educating students with disabilities. So IDEA is a very lengthy and complicated set of laws. So I have put together a couple of things here just to highlight because these are really at the heart of the law, what it guarantees. So it guarantees that school districts find and evaluate students with disabilities. So it is our obligation to find those students that need that help and evaluate and provide that help. It guarantees a free and appropriate public education. So sometimes you'll hear that called FAP. The Free and Appropriate Public Education with his or her non-disabled peers in the least restrictive environment. So there's a lot of words in there. And the the federal government further defined what FAP means in the past few years by saying that it is that the child is making meaningful progress in light of his or her circumstances. So that's about as very detailed as it gets when it comes to what is, what is FAP. And that we're ensuring that the services and supports that we're providing are in that least restrictive environment. So it's the least restrictive environment is not the same for every student. It's where they can make meaningful progress towards their academic achievement. It guarantees that they will get an individual education plan. So that's a plan that is individualized to their specific needs and has the specially designed services on it and related services that they may need in order to make progress. It guarantees that we provide as a district what's called a continuum of services to students with disabilities. And what that means is that we don't offer a one-size-fits-all and it's either this or nothing. So we start out with, you know, maybe minimal, very minimal services. And it could be that kids receive consultation services from a teacher or check-ins, check-outs. They might get pull-out services. A teacher might push into the classroom and provide services. And all the way to a separate class environment. And so as you gradually see that continuum gets a little bit larger or a little bit, the continuum starts serving and providing more services along the way, all the way to whether what would be a center school placement or a separate school, those kinds of things. It guarantees that we provide parent participation and meetings and and ensure that that is happening and that there are protections in place for our students with disabilities until they graduate or until they're finished through their 21st year. So at that point, that's our little background information. Are there any other questions? I know we had some questions about gifted, but before we move on, I wanted to pause for a second.
Board members, any questions? Ms. Jordan?
I just had a question. Ms. Bowen, thank you very much for all this. I think it's really great and detailed. Once the child does have their IEP or 504, then is that, we do go back and reassess them periodically? So they are not taking this with them for the rest of their lives? Is that correct?
Yes. So students that have an IEP are reevaluated every three years at least, unless the team determines that there's a need for a reevaluation sooner. So if they're not making progress and the team needs direction, they could ask for a reevaluation sooner. But every three years, that reevaluation is in place to look at, does the student still require these services? Are they still a student with a disability? It doesn't mean that we necessarily do formalized testing. We would utilize maybe the evaluations that we have, the progress monitoring that we have, those type of things unless the team needs more specific, formalized testing in order to determine that they do meet the requirements and and need that individual education plan or do not.
And then my, one more question?
Yes.
Okay, so then, and for gifted, it's normally the teachers who decide or look at a child and say, I believe this child is gifted, correct? Or is it the parents who have the upper, because I know that I've seen it both ways. So what is the the norm for, especially for elementary?
So, yeah, we we don't see many gifted referrals after the elementary age. You're you're correct. However, anyone can refer for gifted, just like anyone has the responsibility to refer for a student with a disability. So if a teacher is finding that there are reasons to suspect that this child is needing more enrichment than the differentiation they're able to provide in class, they can refer to their gifted assessment chair. And there's a process in place by which they're looked at for many different categories. And then that's kind of a screening that takes place. And and then if they meet those screening requirements, then they would move on for a consent for testing for, to be done by a psychologist in order to determine whether they meet the eligibility criteria. There is, the criteria involves, you know, checklists which teachers do fill out in order for characteristics. They have to have a majority of characteristics of the gifted. They have to have a majority of characteristics of the gifted, but a big component of that is an IQ score, so.
Thank you.
Oh, you did ask, you know, parents can also, I, ask for that testing as well and they'll go through that screening process.
Thank you. I just wanted, so if anybody else was listening that they could ask for that for their child. Thank you.
Do IEPs transfer from one state to another?
Yes. So what we have to do when a student transfers from another state, which is a very good question, is we have to actually look at that and we have to try to get the evaluation components that they completed in the other state. Once we have that information, we, we have to begin providing comparable services to that IEP once they begin school and while we're trying to gather that information. So what we're looking for is to see if they had the same evaluations and met the same criteria that our state requires for that area of eligibility. And sometimes states call things different names. And so one label in one state will not be the same in the other. And we even have states who don't assign disability categories, you're just have an IEP. And so we have to look at it in the eyes of our state and we have to then determine eligibility in our state. So if we cannot get that, that information through their, either the parent has it or we, you know, are able to obtain it through the state where they're coming from or the country where they're coming from, then we have to do a reevaluation. So that, then again, that puts more evaluations on our teams at schools because we have to complete that and make them eligible or not in our state to continue to receive services.
And typically, how long, there's probably not a typically, but how long might that take? I moved here yesterday from Georgia. How long is it going to take for my child to receive IEP services?
Well, their IEP services go into effect once they come in. So we're, we're providing comparable services to what was on their IEP from their other state. Once we have that, either the material from their previous district or we have our new evaluations, we meet again to determine eligibility and we would write a new IEP from our district. But the services go into place right away.
Okay. And my last comment, if I may, is for Dr. Savage. I look at this least restrictive environment and I wonder whether limiting the number of students with IEPs in a school is violating the requirement for least restrictive environment. So if you're sending, in the school assignment process, student assignment process, if you've got a kid that lives right next door to Three Oaks Elementary School, Three Oaks Elementary School is maxed out on the number of students with the IEPs that they can take. Now you're sending that child to a school 15 minutes, 15 miles away from their home, could that potentially violate least restrictive environment? You don't have to answer. It's just one of those fun things to think about.
Yeah, I think that, just to take a stab at it, the, from a district standpoint, freely for all the schools, it's not necessarily that there have to be, I mean, obviously we care about disproportionality just in general in terms of identification, under, over-identification of students with disabilities. But in terms of servicing the students, their current approach, in terms of the different service delivery programs that we have implemented in our schools, we offer very specialized services in some cases in specific schools. In fact, we, that allows us to demonstrate that we are in fact, meeting the individual student needs in specific schools. For schools where it's more broad and we service a lot of different specific, specialized services without that really specialized program, we, it's a balancing act and it is a, it is a difficult thing to have to, to do just because we have to pick and choose where, what makes the most sense to run the program and run it effectively with the appropriate staff and resources that they need. That's a very common issue that we discuss in this piece as well as through some of the boundary work that we've done. But in terms of the least restrictive environment, that side of it, I don't think that they would be necessarily the, the same piece because really we have an obligation for every student that we have in our schools to ensure that they're the appropriate continuum of service and that's constantly being revised. So as, as mentioned in this particular piece, the, the annual looking at the, the individual education plan allows us to ensure that we are constantly offering the appropriate level of support that a student needs individually relative to the programming. That's, that's really kind of a separate piece of it. But I, but I do, I mean, but you do raise a good point that is very important to me from a student assignment standpoint, that we aren't utilizing specific labels and programs to funnel students towards specific schools. I think that is always something that we want to make sure we aren't doing because that would be inappropriate as well. So I don't know if Ms. Bowen has anything else to add.
Well, I would, I would just kind of like to put in place, like the least restrictive environment really is talking about the percentage of time that a student is like spending with their non-disabled peers. And when we're talking about like the school enrollment and those type of things, we also have to be careful that we, you know, if we, that we're monitoring the number of students that let's say would be in a general education classroom with an IEP. Because if we overfill with a number of students with IEPs, you've now created a separate class and it's no longer the LRE, they're all students with disabilities. So we have to keep that balance and, and really be aware that there has to kind of be a limit on the number of, of students at a grade level or those kind of things.
Awesome. Ms., Ms. Vaughn and then Ms. Gittens.
Okay, well, most, most of the first question that I had was just answered because I had that least restrictive environment. And I, and I know in, in the past, just what you were talking about, in a, in a gen ed class, filling it with too many students with disabilities sometimes hurts both sets of, of students in terms of getting the proper amount of enrichment and special attention that's, that's needed. Do we have, well, we don't, how, how are we fixed for ESE paraprofessionals?
I, we, we don't hire necessarily like all ESE paraprofessionals through our department. We do have, we do fund those that are required in excess of what would be normally needed in order to properly run a, an ESE program. So we, like, so those would be our assistants that work maybe directly more on it, on additional individual assistance with a, with a student. And so we just provide the, the funding and those type of things. So I don't have the numbers that, you know, we could get that from HR if you would like.
That's not necessary.
But we, we don't do that hiring through our department. We, we hear and we know because we're out in classrooms every day and we're, you know, helping fill in every minute that we have extra. So, you know, we know that there are shortages in all of those areas. And, you know, even if it's not shortage, we've got, you know, people that are out ill and, and so we have the, the staff that we have available. If we're not in something, we're usually, you know, getting text messages, do you have anybody to send to me today because of X, Y, Z?
Yeah. And is, is there a, well, I don't hate to use the word formula, but is there a recommendation? For instance, if it's a gen ed class with 18 students in it and there are, let's say, seven that receive ESE services, would it be a recommendation that there be somebody that comes in to help, to help with the ESE students? Or is that totally up to the principals if they feel like?
So the principals receive their allocations for the ESE staff based on the, the needs of the students, the numbers of students that they have. And they work with, sometimes our teams, we have people that work with scheduling and we will go out and help the schools develop schedules to provide, whether that's in-class supports for the students, whether that's pulling out for the students, pulling out services based on their IEPs. So we're looking at that individually with each student and helping the school schedule that. And so it might look different in every school because the students have to be served based on their individual needs and not based on what we want to do. So we would really like to have pushing, like, we would really like to have somebody in this class because of, that's the way we want to do it. This doesn't work that way. We have to kind of balance what we would like to do with what the needs of the students are and create that plan that works for, works to develop that. So what there is, is a process in place for above and beyond what you've been allocated. So you've been allocated as a principal, certain number of staff, whether that's paraprofessionals for exceptional student education, whether that's teachers. And based off of when you look at those needs and you've got that schedule done, there's a process which the principals can apply for additional assistance because we can't meet the needs of our students' IEPs with what we've been given. So we work with budget, we work with those schools to look at their schedules to see if there's something maybe we can, you know, tweak within that before we try to solve the problem with additional people. We will try to look at, was there something that was missed in here? And, and we look at it from that angle and then, you know, make those recommendations back to the committee about what, what's needed in order to support the students.
Okay. Thank you for that. And my other question is, how complicated is it for a teacher to be the referring party if that teacher sees or feels that a child either has some learning disabilities that need to be served and yet the child doesn't have an IEP and hasn't, let's say the child's in fifth grade and has never been tested and the fifth grade teacher's like, wow, I'm seeing such and such. Or on the other hand, the gifted, what?
Each, each school has two different people in this case. One is the intervention support specialist. They are supported through Student Services, through the MTSS Coordinator and Amy Clark through Psychological Services. So on that hand, that's who they go to, to refer a student and create a support plan for that student and begin talking about what the child needs above and beyond intervention-wise. And here is why I suspect that there could be a disability and, you know, are there screenings that need to be done? What do the evaluations say? They, they start that, they begin that conversation with the intervention support specialist. And on the gifted hand, that conversation starts with the gifted assessment chair.
Okay. So I guess what I'm saying is, I'm wondering if there are, thank you, if there are cases where, and we all know how overwhelmed teachers are, that they might have a suspicion that this child in their class, even though it's in fifth grade, let's say, needs to be tested one way or the other. So it's a fairly easy process? The, the teacher just has to go with, to the intervention?
That's where they start.
How long does it come to fruition?
So that depends individually per student because it may be that there is information that is already there that triggers that team to say, we suspect this is a disability. In a lot of cases, the teacher might come forward and say, well, they're not doing well, I don't know what's going on. And so they begin a process of multi-tiered systems of support where they, you know, where the tier one, that is for all, isn't working for them. So they put in tier two supports and they collect data about how, what's happening with that. They get the school psychologist involved, they get other members of the team. It's not just one person. So they have a team of people looking at this and using the problem-solving methods to really address what is happening with the student. And, you know, at any point in this process, if what they are seeing points to a disability, they can have consent signed by the parent to do the evaluation. Once that consent is signed, there is a 60-day timeline for evaluation.
Because I, I have heard, you know, from various sources, actually over the years, things like even kids in high school, like, oh my gosh, this child has had this disability all these years and has never been tested or, and, and I know it could be that the parent doesn't sign off on, on it. But, you know, sometimes the parent isn't that aware of services? I know we do everything we can to make our parents aware of all the services, but sometimes for whatever reason, they're not. And it, it is, I, I know it's, when I was teaching high school, I used to hear this from some of my colleagues, kids coming into high school and they're like, oh my gosh, this, this is why this child has it. And it sounds like it is a fairly long process.
It can be. And I will say that we work closely with our student, student services counterparts on this because this crosses over our departments because we eventually end up with the information one way or the other. And so, you know, we do work with them closely to try to prevent those unfortunate circumstances that you're talking about. Do they happen? Yes. And I, I mean, you, you see, sometimes you get emails about those. And then I am involved in those processes to help get those teams on the right track. I, I tell all parents I speak to, we are a large district and I will never say there aren't mistakes that happen and there aren't, you know, teams that overlook things. And once we find out, we get those corrected.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I'll hold mine till the end so they can go ahead and finish.
Okay.
We, okay.
I'll go ahead and proceed.
We'll go ahead to our section two, which really begins about supporting our students. Now that we have a little bit of that background knowledge that we're sharing, we're going to talk about how our department specifically supports students. And a lot of that comes from actually supporting our schools and our staff. So we've recently restructured our ESE department to mirror some changes that took place in the state several years ago. What they had done was added monitoring for student achievement. And really, ESE departments for years were just really focused on compliance with the law and, you know, those IEPs and the compliance with the law on the IEPs. And how the students were doing was not really at the top of the list. And so our, our department had really, I guess, not changed much in, in a long time. And so one of the things that when Jessica came on as director and then I followed her, we've really been working on a plan to incorporate student achievement as like kind of an equal balance between compliance. We know compliance with the law is important, but if we're not seeing student achievement, then that's, you know, that's also not somewhere we want to be. So with that, I primarily manage the implementation and the fiscal compliance for the IDEA grant and I do all of the dispute resolution that comes our way in our department. And then my two assistants are really providing the oversight, oversight to support both the compliance with our state requirements as well as the school support and student achievement. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Scott to talk a little bit about our department that is under him.
Good afternoon. Can you hear me? Okay. Okay, perfect. For school and, for school and program support, our main focus is actually getting into those classrooms and providing schools, principals, teachers with all the necessary tools to provide all of our students with disabilities a free, appropriate public education. This may include things like curriculum support, behavioral support, coaching, trainings. We also provide monthly meetings with our staffing specialists and our department heads at least monthly to provide any updates that are going into effect. While supporting our programs, we're also looking for our, our best research-based resources. We're always on the outlook for something bigger and better. And when we find these resources, we do our best to put together a plan to get these tools in the hands of our teachers to provide them with, for our students. Our personnel starts with our four school-based coordinators. These coordinators support the schools by providing trainings, coaching and modeling strategies. They work on our staffing specialists with IEP compliance and supporting our parents, among other things. In addition to supporting the schools, these coordinators also have other responsibilities. They have meetings and are the state contacts for every one of the eligibilities, planning the extended school. planning the extended school year program, which is a pretty big endeavor with the amount of students we've had lately, to be the coordinator for the alternative assessment, which entails making sure all the teachers are trained, all the materials come in, are distributed to the schools, and then returned to the state without any losses, which is another big project. They also look at service delivery programs and see how best we can support them as well as monitoring student achievement. We also have one coordinator that is housed in our student enrollment department. And they work with parents and student enrollment, reading IEPs to pretty much welcome our new students and parents to the district. She reads the IEPs and takes a look and looks at the comparable services that Ms. Bowen referenced earlier. And then decides a school based on that IEP. And then she acts as the liaison to make sure that that student has all the services that is, that are in the IEP, follow them to the school and then is implemented from the start. We also have several instructional, non-classroom positions. This includes nine learning resource specialists. Of those nine, five are currently supporting more of our behavior issues that we have in the schools. We have two of the learning resource specialists that support high school transition in our work experience programs. We have one that supports families. And then we have another that supports the modified curriculum and alternate assessment. We also currently have 35 staffing specialists. These are, each one of our staffing specialists are assigned three to four schools. They have the responsibilities such as conducting all the initial IEPs, initial evaluations. They do run any of our change of placement meetings. They also help to support some of the other teachers in the building that are maybe struggling with the process of IEPs and are also a great resource for compliance strategies and things like that. Our newest position, which I'm really excited about, is we currently employ a board-certified behavior analyst. And this board-certified behavior analyst has been developing more comprehensive functional behavior assessments and positive behavior intervention plans, along with the training, the coaching and all the things the staff require to implement those plans with fidelity. Although she's only been in this position a few months, we're finding that the plans she's written are, we've seen a lot of progress in the students that have these more intensive plans. And, and so we're looking to maybe build the team of board-certified behavior analysts. Because as we move forward, we're finding a great resource in what she's been able to provide. But then also, as we see kind of coming back from the pandemic and everything we've been through, student behavior seems to be our biggest issue at this point. So we feel that building a team of a behavior analyst is going to better support our schools.
Excuse me. I'm going to ask the members of the audience to stop talking. I'm finding it very distracting. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Susan Ellinger, I'm the other assistant director in the department. So I'll tell you a little bit about what I do. I support the areas of state reporting and department management. Our department collects and provides data for several of the state reporting indicators and many mandatory self-assessments in the areas of transition, alternate assessment, our FTE reporting, least restrictive environment, there's several others. So I make sure that all of that data is correct, collected correctly in the appropriate times and then reported to the Department of Education on time. As far as the department management piece, our department does employ 248 staff members through that IDEA grant that Teresa was talking about earlier. We have a lot of our itinerant staff, like those staffing specialists and our therapists who are working throughout the district, as well as some staff that are assigned to specific schools. So I support all of those human resource functions for those staff. That's kind of included but not limited to, you know, the hiring process and all the documentation for that, that goes with it. Leave management, evaluation management for all of those employees. As well as since, you know, the start of the pandemic, there's a whole lot of documentation and management and questions and communication with folks around the area of COVID and attendance for those itinerant staff members. So many people don't realize that also within our department, we have two small school programs. So if you're looking at state data reporting, we would appear under county-wide exceptional student programs. But what that's really referring to is our hospital homebound program is one example of that. So I serve as the administrator for those 110 students. So anything that you have to do for a brick and mortar school, we have to do for our hospital homebound program as well. It's like, you know, it's just a school without a building essentially. So we have to do scheduling of students, grade reporting, IEP progress reporting. All of those things still have to be done. Teacher support and evaluation for our 12 teachers and our speech language pathologist that's a part of that school. As well as the hospital homebound program has a school improvement plan, just like every other school does. I'm also the administrator for another external program, which is our project search program. I know a lot of you all are familiar with that and have visited. So that's another off-site program with a group of students and a teacher that serves as a transition program for our students with disabilities. And that one, of course, is located at Galisono Children's Hospital. I support some of the coordinators in our department. Our coordinator for the Florida Diagnostic and Learning Resources System, you all may have heard it referred to as FIDLERS before. That's a discretionary project grant that's housed in our department. So that center provides an array of instructional and technical support services to the district's ESE programs statewide, as well as within our district. So kind of four central functions of that are that child find piece, parent services, professional development and technology services. So the centers kind of collaborate with districts and they help support personnel, administrators and our students with exceptionalities. In working within our department, I also support our coordinators and instructional personnel for our pre-K assessment team and our related services personnel. We have a pre-K assessment team here that receives referrals from both early steps as well as that Florida Diagnostic Learning Resources System. So that team is evaluating children ages three through five to determine eligibility and early intervention for those students prior to entering kindergarten. That's a team of nine staff that evaluate over 800 students a year. Our related services team includes our occupational therapists, physical therapists, speech therapists, our vision services, our services for our deaf and hard of hearing students, adaptive PE and our ESE nursing student, uh, services, sorry. So the therapists provide evaluations and services according to those students' individualized education plans. We currently have 163 therapists throughout the district, with about 50% of those being contracted from outside agencies. So we have a lot of contract work that we have to manage as well. And that's really just due to a critical shortage in those areas that started pre-pandemic. Those therapy areas have had critical shortages for several years. We have four adaptive physical education teachers who travel throughout the district to modify that general physical education curriculum for our students who have physical or severe cognitive limitations so that they're able to access those visual, physical education curriculum and programs. We have six vision and two teachers of the deaf and hard of hearing, as well as a district audiologist who help us to provide those modifications and collaborate both with our teachers and our assistive technology support specialists to make sure that students with visual and hearing impairments are able to access their curriculum appropriately. Our assistive tech specialists are working throughout the district to do those assistive tech evaluations for students who have communication needs to help provide like the appropriate device and tools so that they can access their community, their curriculum and also develop, you know, forms of communication so that they have reciprocal communication with their teachers and peers. And last but certainly not least, we have a team of three ESE nurses who consult with our doctors, families and our IEP teams to make sure that we have the proper health services to provide for our students with disabilities. So as you can see, when we talk about department management, it takes a team with a huge variety and a broad range of skills to provide the supports that are needed to support all of our students with disabilities.
And I know that was a lot of information to hear, but I thought it was important because we are often, I think people are surprised, a lot of times parents are surprised when they call in because they think that what we do is oversee principals and, and that type of thing. And they don't really understand what we do as far as a support system. And we really are that support system for everyone involved in educating our students versus overseeing something or managing what is, you know, taking place with other administrators. So all students with our IEPs have sort of, have sort of services, I'm sorry, that are categorized into different programs that we call in our district service delivery models. So these models and names are specific to our county and defined what, define our specialized instruction from our district perspective. Now, you will find, every county has service delivery models. They call them something different, but there's usually some type of program that equates to what, what we have because the needs are similar and similarly grouped. So if I talk about the consultation and instructional support piece over on the left-hand side, these are our service delivery models for our students that are in our general education programs with consultation being a lower level of service than instructional supports. So these just denote what kind of level of service that a student might need. And they're not, you don't determine a service delivery model by what type of disability a child has. That's a really important factor. It's about the needs that the IEPs have provided to the team in order to look at this. So then we have life skills and functional skills. And again, those are our, those are models that really are targeting, working with our students with severe cognitive disabilities. So life skills is again, a, for our less involved students, where functional skills has more supports built into that. And those students are learning functional academics as well as our learning the general life skills that they will need once they exit our school system. We also have specialized programming that we kind of refer to as social communication. And that would be with our social functioning and our social emerging classrooms. That is basically revolves around so, social and communication needs, really focused on behavior and sensory needs go along with that. Many of our students that are on the autism spectrum have a need that is related to this, but not all students that would be in one of these classrooms would have autism spectrum disorder. Our social emerging class is going to be for those students who need all of that, but yet are just emerging communicators or have very little language. And so that is a kind of a program with a little bit more support added in for that. We also have our behavior intervention program, which are for students who have severe behavioral needs that cannot be adequately managed and supported in the general education environment. Additionally, we have some center schools, Buckingham and Royal Palm. Buckingham is our center school, our separate school for students who have severe cognitive disabilities and medical needs. And our Royal Palm serves our very severe behavior needs of students. And so we have those two specific schools that are at that far end of that continuum. So you don't really start there. But that's one of the things that we have available in our district. There is also a program that doesn't appear on here that is not really a kind of a choice program or something, you can go to student enrollment. And that's our programs for our students that are, that do have a disability in the area of deaf, hard of hearing. So there are only, there's only one school at each level that has that program. And so if you're not a student who, if you're a student who needs that level of separate class for that, you wouldn't be sort of served by our itinerant teachers. You would be at that program at that school. But as Susan mentioned, we do have itinerant teachers that travel the district, providing those supports to students who are in general education. They have access to every school because they don't need that level of support of being in the separate class. One of the other important pieces to note on Buckingham and Royal Palm is that if you remember back when I was talking about the state can impose higher regulations than the federal government. So our state, the state of Florida, has imposed a rule surrounding center school placement. And that it, the, if the IEP recommends that placement, a parent has to provide permission. So that doesn't occur in other states. It is, placement is generally up to the IEP team. And the parent has a process by which they can disagree if they don't agree with the IEP team's recommendation. However, in our state, it works backwards on that. And it requires us to file against a parent if they don't agree with our placement at that site.
There we go, sorry about that. As with all students, our end goal for all our students with disabilities is graduation. We have two routes to graduation. The standard curriculum is our more used route, I would say. These students are enrolled in standard courses and will take the Florida standards assessment or the newest assessment as, as they change that in the next year. Our less traveled route is that of the modified curriculum. The modified curriculum route is reserved for those students that have a significant cognitive disability. And that includes about 1,000 students each year or about roughly 1% of Lee County's school students. This is an IEP team decision to go through the modified curriculum route. And as Ms. Bowen said before, the state can impose different rules better or more than the state. And this is one of those instances, it's the same, where a parent does have to consent to the modified curriculum route. It is an IEP team decision, but they have several state governed rules that they have to abide by while going through this process. One of which is an IQ of 67 or below. And again, that parental consent. There's other things such as the teacher must have been, their attendance must have been 70% while the student was in their classroom in the previous year, as well as a bunch of other factors. These factors did change July 1st and became a lot more stringent. So these teams have to go by the new rules as of July 1st. Once a student is, is, once the IEP team decides on the modified curriculum route, the student is then enrolled in access courses. Now, the access courses are enrolled just like a general course. However, they are instructed in a different standard, which we commonly really refer to as access points. The access point is still the grade level curriculum, however, it looks a little differently. I did write down an example that I thought would probably paint a good picture. First, so for a second grade science standard, the standard is to observe and describe water in its solid, liquid and gaseous states. Now, there are three access points that accompany this. And the teacher, based on the student's needs and the student's level, they can choose any of the following. To be more complex, identify objects and materials as solid or liquid. Recognize water in solid or liquid states. Or for our students with even the most significant disabilities, to just recognize that water is a liquid. So you can see how base, it's still access to the grade level curriculum, which is what we're striving towards. But the teacher does have some flexibility in how they, how they deliver that standard. Although the two routes may look very different, the graduation requirements are exactly the same. They need to take the exact same courses, the same end of course exams are required. They need to take the exact same courses, the same end of course exams are required. However, with the modified curriculum route, it gives our students with significant cognitive disabilities, it gives those teachers some flexibility in how they address the grade level standards.
So in addition to the content, the core content, we're also supporting our students with transition instruction by providing experiences both in our schools and with the support of some community partners. So in our schools, we support the students with transition and pre-employment instruction in the classroom, and this would be classroom instruction in things like self-advocacy, communication with coworkers and supervisors, workplace safety. And then schools support our students with hands-on work experience as well. So each school does this a little bit differently, but has created opportunities for them to practice work skills through different jobs throughout the school campus. So it could be done in schools by supporting office staff, by doing filing or helping answer phones. We may be supporting custodial staff at a school by helping with grounds cleanup or other duties around the school. They could be working with school nutrition program staff to rotate stock or to unpack, you know, stock as it comes into the facility. So schools have also created some micro enterprises to provide work experience for our students and support those transition goals. Some of those are things like North Fort Myers created a night's kitchen, and then Island Coast for a while was making some greeting cards and, you know, created a little greeting card business within their school. And I'm sure some of you have either heard about or purchased the pumpkin rolls that are made by the students at Lee High Senior High as one of their transition enterprises. So outside of the schools, we also partner with a lot of local businesses for the provision of community-based work experience for our students. We talked about Project Search earlier, which is made possible by collaboration between Galisano, Lee Memorial, the Center for Independent Living, and Vocational Rehab Services. Everybody plays a great big role in keeping that program going very strong. We have many other community partners that offer work experiences for our students as well, and we partner with Publix, American House, Goodwill, Burlington. We have a huge long list of businesses that support our students for that unpaid work experience. A similar program to Project Search will be coming soon to District Office. That one will be the Lee Employee Apprenticeship Program. It'll be modeled very similarly with work rotations throughout the building, but will be available for students who don't qualify for Project Search. Project Search has some strict criteria about cognitive ability and things, so we want to open the availability for something similar, but for groups of students who need that immersive work experience and aren't quite ready to apply for independent paid employment yet. When students are ready, we also have the options of on-the-job training, where students actually do obtain paid employment, and when they start their employment, they're initially supported by one of our four job coaches throughout the district, who get them started in their job and then fade away that support once they're comfortable and able to work We continue to hear about lots of success stories from our transition services that we've been offering to students. Most recently, we received word, we had a student in Project Search last year who finished, and through communication with our business partners, he obtained a job in July at a local car dealership. One of the requirements when he applied was that he had to obtain his driver's license, which he hadn't done yet. So he took and passed his driving test and has been working for the dealer since July and saving his money. And just recently, we were, sent a picture of him in his new car, new used car, but still, new car for him, where he purchased his own vehicle, he now can drive himself to and from work, and also helps take some of his family members to medical appointments. So a huge success for that student.
So all of our program development supports and training are done with data in mind, and like I said, we're incorporating and really paying attention to how our students are doing. And one of the things that I wanted to share with you is some of the more recent data that we have about how our students are doing. What you notice on the side over here, I'm gonna just click off to that for a second, that's called the LEA profile, and if you notice, that's our most recent LEA profile. What this is, is the state collects data on many data points surrounding students with disabilities, and they're required to send that to the National Office of Special Education. However, this data lags, so you see the most recent report we have here is from fiscal year 2020, and today we're in fiscal year 2022. When you look deeper into this, what you'll see is that you'll see like little signs in there that says the data is from like 18, 19 school year. And so, while this is important, it's also important to know when this comes out, we have to be ahead of that, and we can't really be utilizing this type of data to inform what we're doing on a daily basis. So I just wanted to let you know that, and all of our LEA data is on that same website. You can go to years prior, the state keeps that up. But, so this is really a compilation of some of the data that we are keeping and that we're monitoring about the work we're doing that supports our department improvement plan, which in turn supports the district strategic plan. And the first thing that I will talk to you about is our decreasing the number of students who are exiting without a diploma or dropouts for our students with disabilities. So this is a three-year span here of our dropouts, and you'll see last year there was a sharp increase, which we expected with what was going on and what we were experiencing. However, I will let you know that what we're seeing right now is back down to that decrease. So each month is cumulative for the school year, so I'll walk you kind of through this. At the beginning of the year, we have August, and you'll see that that's a big number there, 86. And what that really kind of represents are, you know, at the beginning of the school year, you have those kids that don't show up, and so they're withdrawn, and they've been withdrawn, they exited without a diploma. So all of these withdrawal codes are what feeds into these reports. So what we do is we work with teams at schools and within our department, and we work to find these students throughout the year and get them re-engaged with education. And so you'll see, you should see that number coming down across each month. However, as the months go by, it's not the same kiddos each time, because you could have five new kids, but we found 10 kids and got them re-engaged. So what we wanna kind of see is that we're not rising too much, you know? So we're looking at getting back down to where we are and continuing to reduce those students who are, you know, disengaging with us without earning their diploma. On the proactive end of that, because we don't want to just seem that this is a reaction to the reports we pull, the proactive end of that is that we are engaged with our school's IEP teams at our high schools, and working with a number of students who, if they call us and say, "We're struggling to get this kid across the line," and we're coming up and we're helping them develop motivation plans, Mr. Kozlowski is great at that. He's developed a number of motivation plans for students to get them across that line, and as well as we've also become involved in our truancy staffing cases. And so we have an administrator from our department sitting in on those truancy cases to find out, what are the barriers? Are there needs that we can address to get you back into a program somewhere? So we are working on that on the proactive end before we see that actual dropout take place as well. So the next piece I will talk to you about are our pieces that deal with decreasing the achievement gap for students with disabilities. You'll see that we've got a three-year trend here as far as the gap that we have for students with disabilities. This one is particular to English language arts, and then we have math that follows. Just to let you know, these numbers are derived by comparing the quarterly progress monitoring data of students. So we take those students with disabilities and compare them to the students without disabilities to see what those gaps are. And so you can see that, you know, three years ago, we had that 41 during the 1920 school year. We had a decrease. We suspect that this is due to not all of our students being tested for various reasons, and, you know, those kind of things kind of came into play with kids being out of school, home connects, like those kind of things over the next couple of years. But one of the things that we do know is that our second quarter data shows us back down to this 29 for the achievement gap. So we are looking, I'm very excited to see that, and some of the things that we've really put into place is different types of training for our staff. So with what we've got going on out there, we can't pool large groups of teachers together, you know, and take them out of their buildings. We're doing a lot more on-the-job training, and we're taking materials to them, and we're working with them and students to get things up and running. So we are doing that in the classroom with, we've purchased some new supplemental pieces, and we're really having teachers identify, tell us the students who are not making progress with the intervention tools that you have available to you through the regular curriculum. And we're really taking that and then using these materials and really getting them suited on some additional intervention that is targeted to students with disabilities. So those are a couple of the things that we're doing for our students in both ELA and math. I'll show you the achievement gap piece here. It's kind of the same trend where it dipped down in that middle and then came back up a little bit, and right now we are currently at 22% for that second quarter of this year. Our pre-K, our pre-K communication skills, oh yes.
Sorry, did you say 22%?
22% on math.
For 2022?
For 2022, our second quarter, our second quarter progress monitoring, we are at 22%.
Thank you, sorry, Ms. Mary.
Nope. So our pre-K kiddos coming to us, we are looking at their communication skills. So one of the new things that we have purchased and implemented is a new communication curriculum called the Tell Me curriculum for our pre-K students with disabilities. We're really focusing on that communication piece because we know that if we can build the communication skills, we're going to see better behavior, more social skills, better able, you know, better academic skills, those type of things. So this is new data, we don't have any comparison to that because this is a completely new program and a completely new evaluation tool being utilized. And so, but you will see from first quarter to second quarter, we have a 10% increase in their communication skills. So with that, are there any questions regarding our school staff and student supports?
Board members. Ms. Morgan.
Actually, I'm not sure whether this question applies at this time, but I'm gonna ask it. You talked about the cost of contract employees, and the fact that we have a number of them, and contract employees are much more expensive than our employees. Do we use a large number of contract employees because of scheduling issues for students? I mean, I would think that we could meet some of these people somewhere between what the, you know, what we're paying to the companies and what they are actually receiving in compensation from the companies, and make it more attractive for them to come to us as permanent employees.
So I do have a little bit of the history on this. I wasn't the director at this time or working as an administrator per se on the school side of things here. But we have tried a number of things with therapies. Therapies have been a long-held kind of critical shortage area in our state and nationwide. So it's really, goes back to the program requirements are very stringent on these and require a lot of hours. I am a therapist myself, so I do have some background in that, and know that the number of graduates from programs is very limited because they have such stringent guidelines on the number of people that they can have in their program, so they graduate very few at a time out of these programs. And then you've got a whole nother side of the medical side of things, and it's not only an educational piece, so you've got a lot of different jobs and job opportunities. So the last couple of years, the department was able to work with labor management and really come up with a supplemental contract that could bump that up to where it was more comparable to an outside therapist. And so the salary rose, and we were able to get more employees because we were experiencing very, like we were not getting employees at all. We did try at one point to do signing bonuses, and that was not a help. And so, but what does help, and I've been out at recruiting events and talking to therapists, one of the things they really like when I'm out talking is that, wow, there are jobs that, like, because they see me in this role, and they're like, "Oh, I'm not pigeonholed into being a therapist, you know, there are areas for me to grow." You know, that is something that they tell me a lot. So I do utilize that as a recruiting tool, as well as one of the things that they really were drawn to was that large supplemental piece that was added on to the instructional salary, once they have, you know, their credentials as a, like nationwide credentials. So those are some things that have been done. I will tell you that, you know, as far as the contract goes, we have to employ people who want to be employees before we go outside for contracts. So this isn't a situation where we're utilizing contractors, where we have people that want to be an employee, and we also can let go of a contractor. So we do advertise all year long, and we will let go of contractors if we could fill that with an employee. And so our companies know that, and we do that because really, as an employee, you have first choice over the schools, and those schools that have contractors in them are up for grabs. So it does, you know, when that, we were able to get that kind of worked into with labor management as well, and that has been an incentive for some contractors to move over to, as an employee, because they really wanted to stay in their school, and that kind of protected their position there a little bit. So we're utilizing those pieces to help in those areas. But we still, even with all of the contracting agencies, we are still down therapists.
Thank you. Ms. Patrica.
So talk to me for a second, if you would, about, oh shoot, I erased it. Behavior specialists? You said we have one certified?
At ECVI?
Yes?
Yes.
Number one, how many would you like to have, in the perfect world? And number two, is this an area where parents are struggling? Meaning, are people presenting themselves to parents as behavioral specialists who are not certified, causing problems for the children and the relationship with the schools in the district? Or am I imagining that?
I'll answer the first one first. I'll take as many as I can hire. It's a very, very competitive field. Behavior analysts that I find, in my experience, and I've been working with behavior analysts for quite a number of years, the ones that want to work for the school system are the ones that want to work nine-to-five, not work nights and weekends as in clinics. They want to work the nine-month school year, they don't want to work summers, things like that, which is fine. So when recruiting them, we always targeted those types as we went forward, going to like a big behavior analyst conference usually isn't a great way to recruit, so to speak. But I'll take as many as I can get because there's definitely the need. As far as behavior specialists misrepresenting themselves, I have not heard that. If you have any instances, please let me know, and I can definitely address that with the schools. But we definitely call our behavior specialists, behavior specialists, and we purposely labeled this position a board-certified behavior analyst because they are certified through the behavior board. The certifications for this position is not only coursework, but supervision and a certification exam that has a passer rate of roughly what the board exam is. So it's pretty difficult, pretty stringent requirements. We do occasionally have outside agencies misrepresent themselves as behavior analysts, and there is a certificate. and there is a certificate lookup site through the board and we can very easily put that person's name in and then see if they're, they're misrepresenting themselves. As far as in-house employees though, just to make sure I answered your question, I'm not aware of it, but we have had maybe some outside agencies misrepresent themselves occasionally. Did I answer that fully?
You did. And you didn't tell me I was imagining it.
No, not at all.
You were respectful.
But Ms. Patrica, I think what also kind of goes towards your question is a behavior specialist in our schools is actually a teacher with E S E certification who works primarily on behavior. So they are, they are not representing themselves as behavior analysts unless they held those credentials. We do have a couple that are in the works, so we're excited about that. You know, so we, we are, so we definitely do have people that are working in our schools who are working toward those credentials, but behavior analysis isn't necessarily an educational certification or anything like that. It's always commonly been addressed in schools through a, an E S E teacher of behavior. And, and when they didn't necessarily work in that school, their title became behavior specialist because, but they are E S E teachers.
Great, thank you.
Ms. Gittens.
Okay, so thank you. Getting back to my question is led right back to this one. The difference in the intervention specialists and the behavior specialists and from, I believe the teachers that spoke to me is an intervention specialist, I'm not sure. But the issue is that many of them are covering classes and, which takes them away from doing the I E Ps, which takes them away from doing all of the stuff that they need to do. And how are we addressing that besides having doubled the load on you guys?
So behavior specialists are, work in the E S E field. And so the ones I know of that are frequently covering classes, it's our behavior classes and our, our, we have some intensive behavioral need classes. And so sometimes if there is an out, someone is out, the best person on that campus to cover that is someone with the skills needed to work with students with behavioral disabilities versus putting a sub in that place. So when they hire a sub, that sub may, you know, go in and, and work to cover other areas. But we, we do provide funding for the schools through I D E A for that behavioral support and that isn't tied to, those behavior specialists aren't tied to completing I E Ps. They're fully there just to support those classrooms of students. So they're not at every school. They're only at our schools that have our programs where we see behaviors that are common.
So the intervention specialists?
Yes, those are, yeah, those are.
Those are the ones that do the I E Ps?
Those would be our staffing specialists. Intervention specialists are the ones who run the M T S S process and that falls under student services. So I wouldn't have much information about what they're being asked to do.
Okay. Well, the, the other side of it too is I've, I've heard from teachers that because the class sizes are large, because we don't have the teachers that we need and situations where you do have an E S E student in a crowded classroom and, you know, I can talk to you about it offline, but it creates a real issue in some of these classes that are over what they really should be. So how are we dealing with that? I know you said earlier that a teacher can request assistance or whatever, but how are we?
Our schools and our teachers can reach out to us. Our schools reach out to us every day requesting assistance as well as, you know, if it come, if it's, if it's something where there are more students allocated to a school, the school has that process we talked about earlier for requesting additional allocations to support those needs. So that, that's one way that the school can handle that as well as, you know, requesting our help to come in and, and work with the team at the school.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. So it is 3:56 and I know you have another section yet, so perhaps we could go ahead and let you finish?
Sure thing.
And then save questions for the end.
Okay.
Okay.
So our last piece here and one of our most important pieces is really how we work with families. While every one of our employees that we work with works with family members, we do have one dedicated specialist, Donna Gerf, who is our family liaison, who works to establish some good collaborative relationships between schools and families. We certainly can't do it alone and I won't go into detail about all of these services that are available, but there are free supports for our parents that the state provides and we have all of this information that we can share with parents when they, you know, seek us out to provide resources to them. Additionally, we work close with our agency partners such as Family Initiative and create opportunities for families with them. We have an upcoming event with them in, in April for autism acceptance and, you know, so we work collaboratively, collaboratively with, you know, all of these agencies as well as some, you know, others in the area to support our families. One of the things that you asked for when you initially asked for this briefing was to hear from a parent from our advisory. And so with me today, I have Eliana Tardio. So she's one of our parent members, longstanding parent members of the E S E advisory. And so I've asked her to come here and, and share with you today her journey as a collaborative partner.
Thank you so much. I have been invited to share my story representing the E S E advisory focused on the power of collaboration. I'm a firm believer in collaboration and I see my children's story at the school system as one of success regardless of the challenges we have faced to get here. It is extremely important to me as I continue to express my deepest sympathy to all families and acknowledge the struggles in the path of raising children with disabilities. By no means is my intention to erase their personal experiences. I deeply understand our unique circumstances are essential to individualize the services for our children and build relationships that will serve as a foundation to achieve free appropriate public education for our kids with disabilities. That said, my name is Eliana Tardio. I'm an immigrant. I came to the U S 18 years ago from Bolivia. I believe in the power of inclusion and diversity and I'm very passionate about education as the foundation of success for everyone. I'm the proud mother of two beautiful teenagers. Both of my children happen to have Down syndrome. And even though they share fraternal bonds and a diagnosis, my two children are two completely different people. That is something important for me for everyone to know. Because when Teresa was talking about disabilities, we have to understand that disability doesn't define people. People are different. I guess more than different, my children sometimes seem to be opposites. Emir, my 17 years old, is a sweet and funny guy who identifies as Latino-American and takes pride in being bilingual. He loves to tell jokes. My daughter, Ayelen, who is 14, identifies as an American girl. She has a strong personality and takes pride in being a self-advocate. She doesn't joke when it comes to her right to accommodations. I have been a Lee County parent for over 15 years. As Emir started his school at the age of three, as stated by the I D A, the law for individuals with disabilities. Emir started his journey in a life skills classroom. By the age of five, I started asking about inclusive opportunities. I didn't know anything about the law. So for me, you know, all these acronyms, F A P, L R E, were like literally talking in a different language, right? But I knew in my heart that I wanted my son to be exposed to communication, to be challenged and experience all sorts of natural opportunities. That day, I remember sitting around the I E P table and feeling like throwing a bomb when I said, I want my son to be included. Many immediate reactions arose, but I remember staying focused on the only one important to me, that one face who smiled. Our case manager or staffing specialist then, this is back in 2009, Casey Foo, who left the county last year, said, let's see what we can do about it. This is my first advice for collaboration for any family and for professionals. For us parents, we need to speak up and take risks. We need to listen to our hearts and we need to challenge others in a good way. If one person listens, that's just a beginning of a long and complex path worthy of all sacrifices. As professionals, we need to be open to listening and we need to get excited about breaking systems. We need to get excited about learning. We can make things happen when we work in collaboration with families. As partners, parents and professionals, we need to commit to working together, to be honest and transparent to each other, to be compassionate to each other, to listen to each other and to speak our truth. Emir and Ayelen started their journey at Pinewood Elementary and I fell in love with the idea of giving them these inclusive opportunities. Nothing was easy, not a single day. On one side, I have adored having constant challenges with behavior. On the other, at that point, my son was shy, non-verbal and would not participate or apparently he wasn't taking advantage of his academic experience. I was called on numerous occasions to consider a change in placement. Every time, I defended their inclusive placement as an investment that one day was going to allow them to flourish and gain the social abilities they needed to succeed. Now I have to mention another critical person who created a strong bond of collaboration between my family and the school. Her name is Ms. Jimena Hurtado and she's one of the most amazing and compassionate teachers I have ever known. When speaking about collaboration, I want to mention the power of diversity. Jimena is Colombian and bilingual. Her cultural background is an asset to the school and she's the one that provides representation to the team and gets to understand things that are extremely important to us as parents of Latin American children. Representation matters and that is how we create collaboration. So let's be sure to understand what we are gaining every time we take a risk. Because what happens is that many times we focus on the things that we feel that we are missing. That is important to keep at mind at all times. I was completely aware of my kids' situations with academic skills. I'm still aware of that. My children have significant disabilities. Still, I have been always more aware of my children's need to gain a comprehensive education that will allow them to strengthen their social emotional learning. We are a reduced family of three, so most of their inclusion opportunities are provided at school through natural interaction with their typical peers. This may not be the case for every family or the goal for every family, but this is our case and this is our goal. Elementary years were hard. Let's don't forget that our children with disabilities are not only facing challenges at school, we have to also deal with medical issues, challenges to access health insurance, aftercare and much more. Working single parents like me have much more to the equation that people will not understand unless they walk in our shoes for a day. When thinking about collaboration, let's keep in mind the power of empathy and compassion for each other. As we expect this demonstration of respect from teachers and professionals, we parents, let's be sure that we teach by example. Teachers and professionals are also real people living real lives. We all have bad days and we all have the power to apologize and understand the reasons behind our difficult moments during this process. It is a long path. Basically, we married the school system for, for us, it's like 17 years, right? And we should not expect roses and butterflies at all times because it's not going to be, it's not going to be perfect, but again, it's going to be worth it. My son is the one that opens the door for my daughter, so I will continue to talk about him to illustrate this path of collaboration. The time for Emir came to transition to middle school. My children have a modified curriculum and they receive grade level education through access points. When it was time for Emir for the next biggest steps, the stress took over. I have never cried so much in my life. I wanted with all my heart for him to keep his path of inclusion, but there were no manuals to follow at that point. Even though the next person I'm going to mention was long before a key piece of collaboration in my story, it was at this precise moment when I got to see her incredible passion for making the impossible possible. Donna Gerf, Lee County Family Liaison, took my hand and walked me through one of the scariest moments of my life, going through my own insecurities and prejudices to allow my son to become the first student to be fully included with a modified curriculum with natural supports. Emir started middle school with a dream team that assured me something I will never forget. They say to me, we don't know how to do this, but we know that we can do it. And for that, we are going to need you. Mr. Carson, who retired two years ago, was the most caring and outstanding principal ever. He would go and have lunch with Emir, call me and tell me that Emir was amazing. Check on him and always have something cool to tell me about him. Mrs. Moore, who is nowadays my daughter's case manager, was and is still another fundamental piece of my kid's success at school. She didn't only help Emir open up and start behaving like a real teenager. I don't know if I should be happy about that or not, but that happened. Still, with an incredible team of teachers, she created organic and natural opportunities for him to belong. In a couple of months, Emir was a cool guy moving independently at school. He won, he won the first prize for best custom for the winter dance and was a student of the year in 2019. My daughter, Ayelen, is to be blessed to be a Three Oaks Middle student right now. Yes, yesterday we had a parent teacher conference and I cannot tell you how I used to get every time we will have an I E P or parent teaching conference, the, the feelings of being so anxious, you know, and nervous were horrible. These days, it's not like that anymore. After going through much, through so much during all these years, yesterday while discussing strategies to help my daughter navigate this new adventure, I felt proud and extremely grateful to see the openness of our team. What was a real challenge with Emir years ago is now a much more natural experience for all of us because we try. We have all grown together as a team and we can communicate and we can listen. When thinking about collaboration, here I have to emphasize collaboration being a matter of continuous communication. As parents, we have the power to share the conversations. I always start with a positive comment, even when all that I want to say is bad. When something bad happens, I try to look around to see the good that is still there. Not everything is bad or good at all times. I know it sounds cheesy, but helping everyone see their contribution to our kids' life helped them feel included too and a part of the success. We all make it happen every single day. Nowadays, Emir is a student at Cypress Lake High School. He's confident, happy. Don't forget that this was the guy who was non-verbal, right? He speaks like crazy. He has plenty of friends and is in the process of starting a new adventure as the assistant of the coach. Again, this didn't happen magically. We have an excellent ally I can go to at any time, Mrs. Bickers. Talking about those who come to the game out of passion for serving, I have to also mention Coach Menes. Coach Menes has done an amazing job for Emir. As adults, we all have the power to create an inclusive and welcoming environment for all children. Emir sits with the football team for lunch and his friends support him organically during the day. If you ask him who he is, he will tell you like right away, I'm an athlete. I'm a football player. As I said before, Ayelen continues to blossom and is happy to have good friends at school that provide natural supports during classes. To end my story, I would like to share this quick reflection on the power of collaboration from Marie Parker Follett from 1924. I never react to you, but to you plus me. Or to be accurate, it is I plus you. Reacting. Or to be accurate, it is "I plus you," reacting to you plus me. We are connected, and we need from each other at all times. You influence me, and I influence you, and together, we influence our children. Let's be sure that we do our best to become the best influence for them. Finally, parents don't have to do this alone, and you don't need to know it all as a parent, so we have all these resources that Teresa was talking about. When I tell my story of success, it's not mine. It is actually a story of so many people. Thanks.
As wrapping up, I just want to talk about some of the other things that might run across your plate at one time or another. And while we always encourage our families to collaborate with us and to call us if they need us, because we're here to support them and help, we sometimes run into a situation where we do have a dispute that needs to be resolved in one way or another. And, you know, while we encourage our parents to contact us first, they don't have to, and they have these avenues available to them. One of the things that they can request are facilitated IEPs, which can be a state-trained person that is actually facilitating that IEP and keeping that on track and moving. So it's an outside entity into the process. Parents also have the ability to file a state complaint where the state would investigate, and that is if they feel like there's been a violation of IDEA. We also can enter into mediation to solve problems that arise through IEP teams, where the state will appoint a mediator, and we will mediate that solution. And then finally, there's a due process request where, again, a family member could be alleging a violation of the IDEA and asking for a due process request to be placed in there. It could be a disagreement with placement. It could just be that they don't feel like there's an adequate IEP, those type of things. And again, all solvable without going through these formal processes. And I always hate to, I always hate when, you know, parents are spending their own money out of their pocket to do this, because there are so many resources that are out there for them for free. So I have included on here Cadre. Cadre offers some guidelines, you know. They do have, you know, parents do have the right to hire representation and do all of that, but Cadre has some really great guidelines for families and choosing advocates that are working as a collaborative partner and, you know, those type of things. So really quickly kind of went over that for you, but I just wanted to bring that to your attention as well as the way that we really monitor our parents' participation. And so the state does send out an ESE parent survey every year, and we do get that feedback back from the state, and it is public, so it is posted on the Department of Education's website. And they do two surveys, one in the area of pre-K and one in the area of K-12. And the questions really go towards how our schools are doing in facilitating parent involvement as a means to improve services for students with disabilities. You know, we as a department work with those schools to support them. I know Ms. Morgan read a letter a couple weeks ago about one of our schools who had reached out to us, and we've been supporting with helping getting those meetings going and trainings going and everything for the families. And so that's just one way to show how we do that from our department and work to support schools, because that's really where the families want to see this happening. It's not really at their department level. You know, I do hear from parents, it's like, "But we want the school to own this. We want the school to do this for us." And so you'll see there's been a little bit of a dip in the percentage of parents who kind of agree that our schools are providing that support, and that those would be the 2021 results were taken last year in May. So we just received those back, haven't gone through in detail about what those say, but that is one of the activities that we will be doing with our advisory group at the next meeting. So we'll be going through there and coming up and brainstorming ideas for how we can work with our schools to get those numbers back up.
Thank you so much.
So thank you for having us today, and if there are any other questions, we'd be happy.
Thank you so much, and thank you, Ms. Tardia, for sharing your story. It was profound. And I think Ms. Patrica has a question.
So, Eliana, I don't, I don't, the first time I met Emir, I was a paraprofessional at Pinewood, and I worked the cafeteria. And he held court in the cafeteria back then, like it sounds like he's doing now at Cypress Lake High School with the football team, right? Like, there's always been something about him that was really engaging and brought people in. And I believe God puts things in your path for a reason, and I think Ms. Hurtado was placed in your path for a reason. I think that the diversity piece, along with just her, she, talk about someone who relentlessly pursues what's right for kids and families. She is that, and I think you needed that. I think you needed that to sort of start your experience in our schools, and that built the foundation upon which you could build. I never got to know your daughter very well at all, but the foundation you needed to build upon for your daughter's success as she made her way through the system as well. It sounds to me like it's been a great experience.
Yeah.
With some hiccups along the way, and I was really glad that you pointed that out, because, I mean, I love our schools, but it is not a perfect marriage either. You know, I've got an email into a teacher right now that I'm not too happy with, so I hear that. It's just very few people put a lump in my throat. You put a lump in my throat today, so.
Thank you so much.
I wish more people would follow the route that you have followed, which is one of a sort of relentless pursuit of what's right for your kids, instead of pursuing the state complaints and the mediation and that sort of thing. Because what I have found is if you give us a chance, we're going to hold your hand and help you. But if you come at it from an adversary perspective, we're not necessarily going to get there. So you were relentless in your pursuit of doing what's right for your kids, but you did it in a collaborative way. And I just think, I think you and your kids are awesome, so thank you.
Any other comments or questions, board members?
Thank you.
Thank you very much for an amazing presentation. We appreciate the work that you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is public comment. Attorney Bruno, will you address the issue of public comment?
Thank you, Madam Chair. School board policy provides the opportunity at this point in the meeting to address the board concerning any matter on this meeting's agenda. If you completed a public comment card, please put it in the basket provided. Please be advised that the board will not respond during public comment to remarks made by speakers. Speakers who fail to follow proper decorum in the chambers will be ruled out of order. Any speaker continuing with such remarks will be required to relinquish the microphone per Board Policy 1.11 and may be removed from the chambers. Per Board Policy 1.11, the time per speaker is three minutes. You will find a countdown on the big screen in the front of the room. Once your time has elapsed, the microphone will automatically shut off. Please state your name when you approach the microphone, and I will call, I believe there's two speakers, so I'll call both of them up. Madam Chair, there are two.
Yes, okay.
Denise Nystrom and Christine Divagili.
Denise Nystrom, I just want to say that that special education presentation just blew me away. As a special education teacher and a special education administrator, I thought that was extremely thorough, and I want to commend, I believe it's, I'll say Ms. Bowen, for that excellent, excellent presentation. It was just really, really good, something very near and dear to my heart. And I guess the only thing that I'll say is that it's shocking to learn that if kids are not identified really, really early on, that they don't qualify for services, because so often, it really doesn't become apparent that they have some kind of a disability until they're older. Even in middle school and high school, I've seen it. But that was just so, so, so good, and I just wanted to compliment her and tell her excellent job. Thank you. Thank you.
I'd only like to comment on the math textbook adoption, or the textbook adoption. First, I'd like to recognize the hard work of Ms. Quisenberry, Ms. Houchen, Ms. Elevato, and Ms. Barber. It's no small undertaking to select a quality curriculum, especially when it comes to 90,000 students, so they deserve an enormous amount of credit. I had the pleasure of participating on this committee, and I just wanted to quickly share with you just a few, a little bit about my experience, as well as the publisher, as well from the publisher view and some of my notes. So I was the only person on this committee, because in order to participate and be as a voting member, we had to attend a virtual training on Zoom, which just happened to be on the same night as a school board action meeting. So there would have been, maybe possibly, well, I know there would have been at least one other person in attendance if it would have been scheduled on a different day. But nonetheless, I was only able to attend because I wore my headphones, and I actually attended the Zoom meeting and attended the action meeting at the same time. So here's a few notes, though, and I'm only going to have time, I think, to read a couple of them, but from the publisher's review. So in Savis, community members were only given the student version of the materials. I was not able to review the teacher instructional materials. This whole process was not designed to make the community member feel welcome and/or included. There were entire portions of the presentation that I was unable to participate in, because I was not able to view them. Go down to McGraw-Hill. I wasn't given any publisher material information or instructional materials. So many things were reviewed that I didn't have access to. I don't even know how I'm supposed to score this. And every other curriculum with the rubric provided, as I was not provided a curriculum like everyone else was. But I think the most impactful was Big Ideas. When Big Ideas was being presented, this is what I wrote, because this was many, many months ago. "This was such an uncomfortable experience for me. I didn't think I could ever be made to feel so excluded in a place that is supposed to pride itself on inclusivity. Considering I'm the only community member here, I know they knew I was coming, and I know that if they wanted me to feel like a part of this process, it would have happened. I was purposefully made to feel like an outsider." When it came to the end-of-the-day activity, my notes were, "Once again, the Google form is not made readily available." I was asked to, I was again singled out and told that I would be given a link to access a form that I, the community member, would have access to. I must have been given a different access form than everyone else, though, because we're 20 minutes into the actual form or into the activity, and I was done in 60 seconds, because my form asked only one question. It asked me to rate my favorite publishers from most to least." That's all that I have.
Thank you.
That concludes public comment.
Okay, thank you. And then next on the agenda are board member comments or reports, and I will tell you that it is 4:26, and according to the agenda for tonight, we do have a student performance. So I'll start with Ms. Morgan.
Well, then, I'm in a jam here, so. I did send you guys an email about considering our responsibility for professional development with a new superintendent. So I'm just going to remind you that I asked you to, those of you who have not viewed Mr. Craybill or talked to members of the Board of Duval, please do so, because I am going to bring forward a recommendation, although I do believe that it should be done in concert with Dr. Bernier. And I have sent him the information as well. So, but my concern in pushing this is that this is someone who will be highlighted at the FSBA Spring Meeting, and based on the reaction to the two presentations when we were at the Fall Meeting, I expect there to be significant demand for his time in services. So I think it's important that if we are interested in doing a facilitated development, that we make the necessary arrangements. Oh, boy. I would like to find out legal and other costs incurred for investigations into conduct by members of the governance team since 2019, and I'd also like to find out how many of those investigations resulted in a finding. I'm just curious about how much taxpayer dollars are being spent on investigating allegations against board members, superintendent, the board attorney, and whether, in fact, there are any findings. I had asked to see budgets for the board and for the superintendent, because I was, basically, because I haven't looked in a long, long, long time. I asked the superintendent to respond to two questions that I raised about his budget. There is a $48,000 item in there that is for Dr. Savage's coach. Now, I mention that because I do believe, yeah.
What?
Coach.
Oh, I thought you said his coat. It was like.
So I mention that because I do believe that Dr. Bernier is interested in discussing as part of his contract, having access to professional coaching. So I just think that needs to be known to us. Secondly, there is an item that does concern me, and it's for $25,000 for the Imaginarium Conference in Naples. Now, last year, we all got to attend, because it was gratis by the Imaginarium, I think is right, conference. But this year, we're paying $25,000 for it, and I think we should be wondering why. So I raise that question. Let's see, I have another question. Oh, legal expenses since, okay, looking at 2019 was the last, which was the last time we had an in-house attorney. Between 2019 and 2022, there was a 44% increase in our legal budget. So I'm thinking that we need to be, as we go into budget season and whatever else is going on, we need to be thinking about how we are spending money to bring people in, but at the same time, our expenditures for external attorneys. And I'm taking, take out the, I mean, yes, $50,000 of that was budgeted, because we didn't have in-house attorneys at the beginning of the session. But nevertheless, I think there's, we should be looking at our expenses. I think I'll just stop there, because I know the others of you will have things that you want to talk about. So I'll bring the other items forward another time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question, please?
Yes.
Along line with Ms. Morgan. In those fees, could we please see the cost where Mr. Deprado had to be conflicted out, so we had to have outside sources? Because that's huge. Every time she's, her name is put on a document, she's conflicted, and we have to have outside counsel. So I think we need to bring that, those figures as well collectively with this.
Can I ask a question about that?
Ms. Patrica.
Does that require board consensus, or can that information be gathered in less than an hour and a half?
I'm not really sure if it could be done in an hour and a half, but I would say, so if the board is willing to take consensus, I think this is a reasonable request, so I'm happy to have the work put together on this. But I think if the board would give the clear direction, that way, if it does exceed, we can just proceed either way.
Okay. Anyway, right?
Well, in terms of collecting expense data and In terms of collecting expense data and so forth, we'd have to go through our business services to collect. We've done similar requests already, but I don't have a problem with doing this. It just, for the boards, if you'd like to vote, that's fine.
Board members. Okay, yes, unanimous consensus, 6-0. Okay, Ms. Vaughn?
I hadn't really planned to say anything except now piggyback off what Ms. Morgan said. I've had some problems with this as well. I know I got an unofficial amount, just in a one-on-one, asking about that, where we had to get Mr. Quick and all of that. And I don't know that there were any findings from any of that. And so, that's troubling. And the other thing that I haven't seen yet, that I'm interested in, we're supposed to be seeing the board budget, I believe, from the protocol manual, it's every quarter. And does that sound right to everybody?
Yes.
I think it's every quarter.
Yes.
And I don't know if I've ever seen it. I'd like to see it for maybe the past couple years. And I know that we spend, I'm very curious on what we spend on some of the luncheons and all of that. And I know a lot of that comes out of the, what is it called, the hospitality, the superintendent's hospitality budget. But I'm curious about that as well, because, okay, it's a different budget, but it's still money that we're spending. And it seems to me that a couple years ago, when the belt was tightening and tightening, we talked about just, you know, not having every board member go to everything, and that includes, I can't even tell you how many, how many different luncheons. And I know the galas have kind of fallen off. I remember the first year or two on the board, I guess, pre-COVID, there were a lot of kind of dress-up things that we went to. But I would say, going back for two years, I'd like to see that. And because one of the considerations that I felt a couple years ago, when we were asking everybody, all the departments in the district to tighten the belt, I felt like, you know, we had to model that as well. And I don't know that we have. I think, you know, there's some more things. I know there's a financial thing coming up with FSBA, and I'm just curious how much money we are expending on these things, and if there's any way that some of it can be cut back, or on a rotating basis with board members. I understand the importance of, like, FSBA, the different classes and seminars that are provided, and that they're important. But, you know, we've spent, I'm just going to say it, we've spent, what was it, $6,000 for Dr. Lee. And I've had several conversations with him, and he's a very nice man, and we've had a couple good conversations. But again, okay, it's only 6,000, which seems like a drop in the bucket with everything else. But I don't see it as particularly valuable, that I've gotten valuable feedback from that. So, I would like to see us model a little frugality when it comes to trainings, and dinners, and luncheons, and travel, and all of that. So, is that a possibility then? And going back two years on the board budget figures, and also on the hospitality figures? And again, that board stuff should have been coming to us every quarter. And I mean, it's not just with Lizette and Latonya. I don't, when Susan and Mary were the board secretaries, I don't remember seeing it either. So, that's what I'm going to say about that. I may have a few more comments on different things I've done this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Vaughn. Ms. Gittens.
Okay, a couple of quick things. I had sent you all an email earlier in the week asking that we, as a board, have, direct the superintendent to provide us with the list and the number of available staff that could work at least once a day, I mean, once per week in a school, in a subbing-type situation. And it came about because we do, and it's not that I don't think they're doing their jobs here, but like I said many, many times before, we are hemorrhaging in the schools. We have got to get help for the teachers and the staff that's in the schools. And I had spoken with the superintendent a while back, and he had told me they were putting together a list of the possible people that could go out. I get all of that, but time is of the essence. Because every day that we have teachers that are on the edge and having to do multiple classes every day, day in and day out, that is why we are losing them. And so, I am requesting, and I don't really see why anybody would want to go against helping the teachers, but two-pronged approach. One, to, by the end of Day Friday, to have a list of all of the, and the number of people that could go from the district office at least once a week to a school to help. And also, part two of that is to provide the ability for subs, both academic subs and bus subs, to be half a day. We will, from what I've gotten from people in the community, it's a very viable thing. People have, when I mentioned it, people have come up to me and said they would be very interested in doing that. They can't give a whole day. They don't think they have the stamina to do that. But a half day, if we had someone, and speaking to some of the administrators, asking their opinion on this, and they said it definitely would be helpful, because there are many times that teachers leave half day to go to the doctor, or they have an appointment in the morning, and they come in half day. Anything right now to help our teachers, and just to show them, and the staff in the schools, that we are doing everything possible to help them. So, that's why I'm bringing those two things forward. The third thing, I know there was bargaining yesterday, and I understand that, you know, everybody's afraid to say anything about what happened in bargaining. It's basically on YouTube to look at it anyway. But a lot of, several teachers have contacted me, and they said, you know, we were hanging on until January 12th, because we were told January 12th that there would be some solution brought forth. And in fact, let me just read this real quick. There was a letter that was sent out to all of the, I don't have it pulled up here, sent out to all of the union members and everything, saying that after January 12th, there had been a tentative agreement made, and that, you know, something would be forthcoming regarding payment for covering classes. And some of them, as they said to me, they were holding on to January 12th, and January 12th passed, and here we are, almost at February 12th. And I understand you can't talk about all the details of bargaining, but people are at the end of their rope. And to their, their impression is, if nothing is happening, you know, is there an impasse? Is there something where the board needs to step in? We've had these ESER funds for, what, going on two years now? I mean, a year, over a year? We need to get it out there. We need to get up off of it. And if it takes an impasse vote from the board, then we need to think about doing that. The people out there every day do not understand what's taking so long to just pull the trigger and give the money. And I understand about bargaining. I know about all that. But we got to do something, people. We really do. It's, every day, the hemorrhaging gets worse. So, the, I'd like to find out what, where we are with bargaining, and then the other two motions to have by Friday.
Good afternoon. I would just like to say that anything that's been ever advised for me as a lawyer for this board, but also in this capacity, is for you all, not for us. So, that's the reason we try not to talk about it. Last night, we ironed out the planning time issue with secondary schools, or with, for secondary teachers. That issue was going on since January 12th, but there was miscommunication between the parties as to interpret how we resolved that. It was resolved last evening, and we moved on to professional development. So, that's where we're at.
And is there any type of, an idea when this will come to fruition?
What will come to fruition?
I mean, Vaughn, when will people get the money? Because right now, what they're feeling is that they're working...
They will be paid under the new formula at the secondary level, retroactive to January 12th.
And will that...
We'll be signing an MOU with the union interim
Right.
On that issue in the next couple of days.
Okay, that's all I'm saying. If we say to them, then that's a group of people that are happier, because they understand, we've come to a conclusion here, and in a couple of days, you're going to get something. That's all they're wanting to hear. So, I mean...
Thank you, yes.
But they've been paid all along.
Yes, they're being paid at the old, at the status quo. Sure, yes. Nobody's not getting paid.
It's not like they haven't gotten anything.
Correct.
As a matter of fact, the people that are way high with number of years, they may owe something.
The people, I mean...
Maybe I shouldn't have said that.
Teachers stand to do very well providing coverage under our new agreement. Yes.
Yeah, but it's not like they've gotten nothing. They've gotten paid all along.
Correct.
Just not at this rate.
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Can I ask on that? Because someone did say that they were not getting paid until
There was a period of time...
All of this was all satisfied. So, there was time that they weren't getting paid.
There was a period of time where they were getting their regular pay. It was just the coverage pay was frozen by payroll. So, they wanted to, and TAOX president asked us not to pay it until the new formula was figured out. So, I actually asked payroll to start paying, and then that was changed. So, we always intended to pay people for what they were doing. It was just a matter at which formula, based on which formula.
I just want to make sure that it's clear, because the way you just, you are, like Ms. Vaughn just said, they have been getting paid, their regular pay, when you just said you always intended, that was the extra.
Correct. Well, for coverage, correct. Which has always been in the contract. There's always been coverage language in the contract. There was a period of time where we froze paying for coverage
Thank you.
Because we weren't certain exactly what formula to use. And that essentially ended last evening.
Right. But up until that point, the correct, transparent thing to say is that there was time people were not getting paid. It is not as clear-cut as saying, well, all the while, they were getting paid, just not ESER funds.
Paid for coverage, correct. They were getting their...
I understand.
Yeah, okay.
I understand. But some of them were not getting paid for coverage
Fair enough.
While the negotiation was going on. That's all I'm saying.
Thank you, Mrs. Gittens. Ms. Patrica.
May I add a question to Ms. Gittens through the chair? Yes. So, the email that I received said that you were going to make a motion to immediately direct the superintendent to assign all certified personnel from coordinators and below to schools to assist with teaching and learning. That's not what I heard you say just now.
What I...
Well, I'm not clear on where we are.
I said, okay, I just said initially, there were three things. One was about the bargaining. I asked a question about it. Prior to that, I mentioned two things. One, directing the superintendent to provide a list of, and number of available district staff that could work at least one day per week in schools. That's what I said. The second part of it was directing the superintendent to provide ability for half-day subs and half-day bus drivers to happen.
May I?
Yes, please.
So, I don't think either one of those require action. I think that, I think that you seek consensus of the board to direct the superintendent to do that. And again, you referred to the email you had sent to us, and...
But that's, and I said in the beginning of this, Ms. Patrica, that I had revised it and shortened it.
Okay, I'm sorry. I didn't, I didn't understand that.
So, this is what I am going with today. I am asking for the board's consensus to direct the superintendent to put this into place by the end, and get back to us by the end of the week, because we just keep going on and on, and we cannot continue to have meeting after meeting and discussion after discussion to decide. This is a simple fix.
I understand. Okay. And before I offer my consensus, either a thumbs up or thumbs down on that, I will tell you that I believe that our role as board, a board, is to direct the superintendent to address the problem, and to come to us with a plan and a solution to do so, not to direct him on the specifics of that solution, and then to hold him accountable for how well the solution he brought forward is addressing the problem. So, I feel, I feel as if I'm stepping outside of my role in supporting those things.
Well, if I may respond, I don't think so. I think other people have come up with ideas on this board and thoughts as to how we can do it. I'm not saying we direct the superintendent to do it, where I'm saying that between now and Friday, to tell us the feasibility and when it can start. No one is saying, do this tomorrow. And it's not something that's way out in the stratosphere somewhere. There are other districts that have done this and are doing this on a regular basis. So, I'm just, it's a possible, you know, you present an issue, and to me, you present a possible solution.
Thank you. Ms. Gittens, Dr. Savage has a comment.
Yeah, if I may, thank you for, I just wanted to give you a chance to have the discussion. One of the things that we had done a little while ago, actually, was to start organizing ourselves for this type of work. Really, some of us began earnest at the beginning of the school year. We recognized that schools were short. We knew we were during the surge. We needed to cover all manner of different tasks, whether it was substitutes, whether it was teaching, whether it was answering phones, bus ramps. And so, there's a couple of parallel efforts that have been underway, and I believe we've been sending in the board updates. But just to kind of clarify, because some of it, I believe, is exactly what Ms. Gittens has asked for. And so, I just want to make sure that I'm clear on this. Dr. Vaughn, I'm going to give it my best job, but if you want to kind of fill in what I've missed. So, one of the things is that the school development executives, who are the supervisors, of course, for all the schools, they specifically have worked with individual schools who are hit by this surge in very different ways, to address the overarching needs that they have. And then they have been in partnership in curriculum in particular, where most of our teaching certified staff are, to actually send people out. And so, some of the people who were in our audience earlier today have been covering in schools even this week, and last week, specific coverages. What they did, so instead of just sending people out to schools, what we had done was actually asked for the schools to tell us specifically what they need, what are the duties that they need. And then staff from our various departments here actually signed up for those pieces and did this, in some cases, more than once a week, numerous times, just so that they can give the school the support that they need, based on what the school tells us that they actually need. But that's, that's just a few of the rough examples. Dr. Spiro, would you fill in?
No, you did, you did very well, Dr. Savage. So, yes, schools request through their executive director, teachers that they need to help cover classes. And then we do have a list here at the district, that we look at those certified staff members, and then we do assign them out to schools when they're requested. Also, in addition to that, schools can sign up on an ongoing basis for any non-instructional support they want as well, to help with areas such as parent pickup, parent drop-off in the caf... the cafeteria, in the hallways, in the office. So anybody in this building can be tapped on the shoulder to help schools with those other duties also. That's been the process since day one, Dr. Savage, actually, for schools to contact through their executive director. And when we agree with Ms. Gittens, we want to provide, we want to provide the schools with the support that we absolutely can from the district. And then, Dr. Savage, for your point, yes, like the individuals there in the room back here, and you were pointing back to the math team earlier, yes, so they go to, they go to schools, and then in the evening at home is when they work on their work, such as the best standards, the new progress monitoring that's coming out, and some of the other additional work on top of supporting the schools.
Yeah, the one example, Mr. Patrici, who's sitting out there, during a math adoption where all the people in our district are going to be dependent on the materials that they're doing, the supports that our math teachers need across the whole district, and that small but mighty team, all of them have also been covering math classrooms, as last week, and then, and then doing their jobs at nighttime to try to provide the resources and supports that the teachers need. Many of our instructional staff are out in schools, pushing into PLCs, helping administrative teams. I just, I know because I'm related to some of these folks, so I just know that it's really been an all-hands-on-deck piece, and I just wanted to give Dr. Spiro a chance and his team to really clarify some of the things they've been doing for many months now, and these have been setups, but they're very much tailored to what the schools are telling us directly what they need. And every time the principals have come together, every time they've had the principal leads, that request has been re-upped again to say, make sure you update your needs, you know, tell us what you need. The school development execs are out in the schools all the time. In fact, Dr. Spiro, would you mind reminding, since day one of the school year, in terms of directive to the academic services staff, and how many days they actually spend out in schools and assisting in that way as well, so they can see firsthand?
Sure. Well, that's academic services. So since the beginning of the year, they've been expected to be in schools at least four days of the week, supporting schools. But I want to tell you what Dr. Savage just said, and want to reiterate. We just spent the last two weeks doing data chats with principals, and one of the pieces we reiterated every time in those data chats were, if you need the support, tell us what you need. Ask, because we want to do exactly what Ms. Gittens has talked about. We want to deploy our staff to the schools wherever they need it, but we have to know what they need in order to make that happen. And I do want to say, it's not just academic services. Our partner is our HR family as well. You know, they're in this with us, so we meet on a weekly basis with them also.
May I please just respond with that?
Yes.
Okay.
Mrs. Gittens.
This is the type of thing when we talk about transparency. If, if the community and all of the, the schools know and have data on what you all are doing, it calms people down. It helps people understand, yes, we are doing things. But this is, you know, it can't be under the cloak of, yes, we're doing something, and not tell people this. This should be, have been out there tooting the horn and saying, this week, this many classes were covered by people in the district. And put the list up that maybe somebody up here that's listening may want to, or somebody listening to this may want to sign up and say, I'll help in the cafeteria. But we have to share that information for everyone to know that it's there, and this is what we're doing. Otherwise, the assumption is, we're not doing it. Does that make sense?
Oh, it makes perfect sense to me, yes. And that's why, I know for us, I try very much to try to share that with you, this governance board, on an ongoing basis, very much so, as Dr. Savage said, we also try to communicate with our schools whenever we get in front of them. But I think it's beyond that, Ms. Gittens, you're saying, that other, other areas of our community need to be able to see, here, here's how many schools are being served by our school district.
How many classes are served, I mean, are covered, or how many people, you know, volunteered? That is a, a piece that the community sees, that we are working on this together as a team. That, that's all that I'm saying.
Thank you. Thank you.
So based on that, I would take off the first part of it. I still would like to see the superintendent look and into, with HR, the ability to do half-day subs and half-day bus drivers.
We do have the capacity to do half-day subs. It's already an existing piece. I think there's just a lot of opportunity for us to increase. It's, because it's not been our traditional way of doing business, I think that's something we certainly can, can put together, and as well as anything that we can outside of the box, we're happy to put into.
And we need to market it, because there are people, if they see that, you know, they don't know what other opportunities there are. They hear sub, and they think a full day.
Right.
So we need to market it better that we can do that.
And I'm happy to take that back to the staff as well.
And I am satisfied. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Jordan. I know what time it is, but I have to bring this up now.
Okay.
The letter.
Yes.
I sent, Ms. Gittens had sent some-
Edits.
Edits. And I had sent that out to all of you. So I just wanted to make sure that, because that's coming tonight, and I just want to make sure that everybody had seen that, and where do we go with that?
Yeah. Ms. Vaughn.
Okay, you're talking about the letter that says, to the community.
Correct.
Right? I honestly do not see the value at this time of addressing a letter to the community regarding our stance. We've talked about it from, from the dais. People who are interested will hear that. That said, once, and I'm sure it will get out there and be on the ballot, but once it's on the ballot, I feel like then it's time to, you know, do what, what we decide is, is important. Frankly, I saw some, some rough spots in it, some very rough spots in some places that didn't flow. I, I didn't send in a bunch of edits because I planned to say what I'm saying right now. I see no point in, in that for the community right now, before that has gotten, even gotten on the ballot. I don't know what, maybe those of you who are in Tallahassee will give a report tonight on, if you had the opportunity to talk with any of our local delegation on the elected versus appointed superintendent, I'd like to hear if that was addressed at all. But, and again, I don't know how my fellow board members feel, but I just feel like it's too soon to address the, the community on it.
Okay. So, Ms. Fisher, I need to, we need to know if we're gonna bring this forward tonight because there are some edits in here that have not been done, and for us to bring it tonight, it's incomplete, it's just not a good idea.
So how did, how did this work? I, I thought we were all sending our comments in to, were we sending our comments to you, Attorney Prenderon?
Yes.
And then you were gonna come back to us with a draft that reflected those comments?
Oh, it was Ms. Vaughn.
Between you and, and the chair, you were gonna come back to us with a draft that, that reflected those comments?
Well, the draft from Mrs. Gittens is not in the letter, and I know that there's, there's like bubbles and some other stuff that needs to be put in there. All I have is what was presented to, what Ms., I don't know who sent it out, but what was sent the last time, and then we received additional comments after that. So that, those additional comments have not been incorporated, and it's only really the comments from Mrs. Gittens.
And I didn't see comments. I just saw stuff crossed out.
No, there were comments.
Everybody was supposed to-
I'm not denying that there were comments. I don't know how to access them. I don't use that program. So I don't know, I didn't know how to access them. I saw little bubbles, and I didn't know what to say.
Okay, may I ask? It came to us in that format, and all I did was click up and put a bubble where I wanted the comment. I don't know, that's the program it came in. I did not switch the program around, so.
And you did. I just said I didn't see the comments.
Okay. So if, if I may, we, at our last meeting, we had spoke about it, and it was to come back before, and we were supposed to have it turned in by Friday. This, however, came to us on Sunday.
Okay. So, excuse me, are you saying you're not going to accept mine?
No, no, no. I'm just saying, they asked what the statement was, and so that's why it was to have everything to us, and when I left to go out of the room, and I came back, I was told by Friday, we had to have this. So by Friday, it was sent to, comments were supposed to be sent, it was, then it was returned back to all of us.
If I may, I'm point of order.
My understanding is you had to have it to us by Friday.
If I may, just please, point of order. It is 5:00. And if, so the meeting starts at 6:00. So if we are not ready with the statement, I support doing the statement, taking a stand, and educating the public. The sooner the better. But if we are not ready this evening, perhaps we should wait till the next meeting and, and then do, you know, have it, have a completed, edited version of the letter that we want to send and make sure that it's ready to go. So that would be my suggestion, if I may.
Consensus?
Good thing.
Consensus?
To do-
Wait till the next meeting.
It will come off the, off of tonight's.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
All right. Do you want to finish your comments, Ms. Jordan?
No, I'll do, wait. I just wanted to bring that up, so if we had any conversation, did not want to wait for this evening for this.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Ms. Patrica?
As late as it is right now, it'll be later tonight if I make my comments tonight, so I'm gonna do them right now.
Okay.
DAC, oh my gosh, Dr. Spiro, you like deployed this army of amazing staff to put in front of our families to discuss the student code of conduct, and it was literally an army. Like, not literally, but you know what I mean? There's so many people in those breakout groups, and then you, Tammy Scott introduced them to Jam Board or Jam Board, which was like mind-blowing to some of the attendees. I still don't know how to use it, but it was just every single meeting I go to, and the more often you put staff in front of that group, the, the better off we are, because it really, you really, really are addressing their concerns and making, not making them feel like their feedback matters. Their feedback really does matter, and that's shown in the follow-up. And the expertise of staff and their willingness to serve is just so evident every time you put them out there. So DAC was fantastic. I will memorize this student code of conduct, given the number of meetings I'm gonna be in about it, but, but that's all good. So thank you for your continued amazing work with that, that council and that committee. What else did I have? School counselor week, chief of staff, Dr. Carlin, thank you for posting that on your Facebook page. I would not necessarily have known that, and I know that I am the pain in the butt on the board when it comes to acknowledgements, but this is one I would have thought we would have acknowledged, and I would not have argued with, because it is genuinely school-related. It is directly, directly related to the functioning of our schools. I am incredibly grateful for our counselors, and I, where do, where do we stand on acknowledgements? What's going on with that? Does anyone know?
That's part of, I believe, our workshop. Is that okay for me to answer?
Yeah.
So are we not doing acknowledgements right now, even school-related ones?
We are doing, we have had acknowledgements.
Acknowledgements, yeah.
So this is education, school counselors week right now, like Tuesday of school counselors week, but we're not acknowledging it.
I do have that on my comments for tonight.
In our board meeting for tonight.
It is, well.
I understand, but as a board, we would acknowledge them, right?
Yes.
So what's, who, Dr. Savage? I don't know who to ask.
May I just say, I thought we were still negotiating what and who and how we were going to acknowledge.
I thought we were negotiating what, who, and how on the, the racial and the ethnic ones, but I thought we had agreed to the education ones, because like you said, we have been doing those education ones.
But I thought we were supposed to get a li, anyway, get a list or whatever.
Okay, so 10 hours, 5:05. So do you have more comments, Ms. Patrica?
Figure out what's going on with acknowledgements, please?
Yeah, we'll get back, we'll get back with you.
The perfect acknowledgement queen here is a rising podium.
Sorry, the little red light's not on, but it is apparently working. So at the last time that we discussed the protocol manual, the agreement to the process was that all acknowledgements or recognitions would all go in the acknowledgement category. They would be listed above the agenda items so that there would not be a vote on them, but they would be included every, during every meeting. So that was the agreement at the last meeting that we had to discuss this.
Which items would go in that, is the question?
Pardon?
The question is, but which items were going to be acknowledged?
Everything that was on the list that was approved at your November reorganization meeting.
So the bottom line is, it was missed off of the agenda?
Okay.
Yes. And those should be added to the agenda through the board office.
That's what happened.
Okay.
Thank you.
The last thing is United Way and how amazingly, unbelievably good they are, and, and is there a way for us to embed their services in the training of our social workers, counselors, and other such employees who help kids who are in need? Because they want to be in our schools more. That's a real win-win for us, because we can't do it all. United Way does a lot of the things that we really shouldn't be doing as a school district, and to, to flex that partnership, I would think, would be fantastic. According to them, this is the strongest relationship they've ever had with the district, but given the data they showed me, there is significant room for improvement, even though this is the best they've ever done with us. So is that something we, as a board, should direct the superintendent to do, or do you want to explore that and come back to us and let us know? How to go about that?
That would be helpful, if you'd give me that opportunity to explore it. I'm a big fan of the United Way as well, so I just want to explore it and bring back some more information, then go from there.
And that's, it's gonna require some work from me, too. Like, in order to have more community schools, I'm gonna have to raise some money for United Way, which, that's on me. But in terms of reaching out for food and clothing and, like the student at South Fort Myers High School who lost everything in the tornado, United Way was there in a heartbeat, and I didn't even think to send them there. So how many of our school personnel are thinking to send them there?
They're pretty well aware they do the, and we have our, our resource room. They're pretty well aware that it's, we purposely put it in close proximity where the social workers can access, but I, again, I'm happy to go back offline with the team, and we can put some information in the board weekly, but then bring back some more for discussion, if that would help.
That would be awesome. Those are my comments. Thank you. And those students. Went really fast.
Carefully had her hand up.
Thank you. Mrs. Morgan?
So to piggyback that, I would also like to explore what our website can be used for in terms of providing information to families, because it, to me, list, being able to list what United Way provides to families that, that they don't even have to come through us. But I don't know that that's, we want to put ourselves in the position of doing it for one agency, but there's got to be, maybe there's a way we can do it. So that's, that's my add-on.
I was saying offline, because I was, that was my concern as well. I don't want to be preferential. We love the nonprofits, there's so many, they're connector of others, but that was one of the lingering issues in my mind as well.
That's a really good point.
And, and they have 2-1-1 in the community outreach centers. So, yes, okay. And student services employees are aware of the-
Services.
The issue of supplies and clothes and shoes that they can get from here, and they have a very well-oiled machine as far as delivering those to people in need.
They do, but the schools, not all schools are using them. And that's the issue.
And then maybe that would be something you want to say to the principals.
They'll take care of it.
Okay. So Attorney Prenderon, do you have any comments?
Very, very quickly, I was looking at your list of workshops, and there was a request for a workshop on lighthouse, the recommendations from the last investigation, as well as definition of whistleblower, how much was spent. So I don't know if you want to perhaps move that up on your list, because I think that incorporates what Ms. Vaughn was talking about, as well as Ms. Morgan. I believe Ms. Morgan had made that request, as well as Ms. Giavennelli, to have a wrap-up[1752.34] of the investigation that you voted on, I believe it was in March of 2021. What were those recommendations, how much was spent, the lighthouse process, and all of that good stuff? So you may want to move that up. And then my husband sent me a sweet note saying that I said that the Florida Supreme Court was the highest court of the land. I don't know if I did, but if I did, I will correct that. Florida Supreme Court is the highest court in Florida, United States Supreme Court, highest court of the land, and of course, the United States Constitution, the supreme law of the land.
That's what spouses are for.
There's basketball court up there. That's how we know. Yes.
I am so sorry, I forgot to bring up one thing, and I, it's one sentence. We were supposed to get the super, the board attorney's evaluation instrument yesterday, and it is due back to staff by the 25th, so we need to get on that.
We got it today.
We did?
We did.
I think so.
Lenny in the back is on it.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, Superintendent Savage.
Just a thank you to staff. I just, a number of you just came up with almost no notice whatsoever, and just, I don't know what I'd do without all of you, so thank you very much for your, your hard work.
Okay, seeing no other business and, and hearing no objection, this meeting is adjourned.